We'll call the meeting to order, our September twenty-fifth meeting. We do not have a closed session tonight, so we begin with our open session. Ask for a roll call to establish one, please. Mrs. Bickers here, Mrs. Perry here, Mrs. Brown here, Mrs. Norman here, Mrs. Wolf here. Please stand for the pledge. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a motion to adopt our agenda, please. Someone? Was that Carol? That was Carol, sorry. A little different sample of wine. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
There's no achievements.
Number?
Mine is off over here.
All open and def.
I'm gonna leave mine on.
No, I just would make a recommendation that we move action item eleven to before information item nine.
All those in favor of the agenda with that change? Aye. Aye. Oppose, here is five oh. We have public comment now on non-agenda items. I have one card for a non-agenda item, Kim Novick.
Hi. Thank you, board members, for letting me speak. I'm Kim Novick, and I'm a parent to a few kids in Laguna Beach and other rural Thursday High School. And on the heels of our district being recognized by the A D L for stellar participation in the nationally-recognized No Place for Hate campaign, I find this timing serendipitous to bring to the broader public's attention our district's focus on openness to diversity and efforts toward inclusiveness for all. I'd like the school board to consider the following request. Each year, Jewish families in Laguna Beach face the high holidays, Rosh Hashanah, and Yom Ha'Pur. Their traditionally observed non-work non-school days and must decide if their kids will miss school and deal with the stress to miss school days or attend school and miss observing these very important holidays with their families for fear of falling behind or, worse yet, compromised grades. In our case, this year, we experienced missed exams, preparation study guides, group projects, and full letter grades were reduced for not being in class to participate on that given day. While these are just a few examples of the stress that kids feel when they miss school on those two holidays, when they check Aries and see that they've been demoted from good standing, it's an added stress. And while it's correctable, I think it's avoidable. As a community that prides itself on being progressive and whose priority is to raise global citizens, recognition of these two high holidays by communicating with the administration that there should be no major exams or special projects, parent meetings, or major assignments, et cetera, it would be a small step to show inclusiveness and the sensitivity to Laguna Beach school district students. This effort to not schedule exams and such, it really communicates a clear commitment to the very concepts we strive to achieve in adopting our district-wide No Place for Hate campaign. And while I understand the numbers and I acknowledge that we don't have fifteen percent of the Jewish population of Laguna Beach, we don't then therefore make these holidays part of our school calendar's days off. I'm aware that there are cities that do and other communities where that's legal. I would assert, though, however, that this type of consideration for these holidays, as well as for all the others that are in the minority, it shows an authentic interest in creating an inclusive experience for all students in our district. A shift in our openness to this commitment in our school planning sends the message to our Jewish families that they may not leave the community to feel included and accepted. Rather, this decision for proactive communication to fulfill this request would send the message to all families that we're a district that celebrates diversity and goes the extra mile to welcome it. And more importantly, it teaches our student population that everyone matters, that diversity is good, that inclusiveness should be celebrated and practiced in our homes, in our schools, in our broader community. And this lesson, above all, is the foundation to become an aware, inclusive, and sensitive global citizen. And I believe, as well as my husband believes, that this is ultimately the type of person we in Laguna Beach would like to help shape so our children can grow out in the world and teach these very same values. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda? Then we have no recognitions to speak in. Now we move to our reports. First, we have our student representative, Piper Warner.
Alright. We are kicking off this week with a full swing in homecoming preparations. Our Laguna Palooza tickets are currently on sale for the dance on October sixth. Our dance will be held in the quad rather than in the north gym. The game preceding the dance on October fifth is against Rio Honda Preparatory. Halftime show dance practices are beginning this week, and the homecoming court was announced last Friday. The court consists of Sarah Hollins and Nicole Hawkins, Cashin Williams and David Berger, Quinn Winter and Jared Angus, Nina Bresker and Sean Nolan, and Eliana Arthur and Callum Wilson. Club rounded for the high school will be this Friday at lunch. All students will be given the opportunity to join some of the fifty-plus clubs on campus, ranging from community service groups to karaoke club. Elmore's Back to School Night will be this Thursday, September twenty-seventh. First and sixth graders will be going to Calumina next week for their science game. On October tenth, there will be a school-wide testing for the P S I T and pre-A C T. Seniors will be attending a seminar in the Art Theater during that time. Unfortunately, I haven't received an updated sports report from Mr. Gill because he was at league meetings all day. I also wanted to say another thank you for the opportunity to attend the Challenge Success Conference at Stanford. It was very interesting to discuss the causes of stress in our school community and discover ways to potentially get rid of these issues. At the conference, I also had the opportunity to talk to other students from all over the country about their school's causes of stress. I was fascinated to know that other schools have similar issues, mostly brought on by outside sources such as unlimited I D S assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. We have our libel report.
I have, I have no reports.
C F C A? I have sent an email to the board. Do we have any representatives from organizations, P T A, Booster School Power, that wish to report tonight? Board members? Any committees that you are assigned?
Yes, I attended the Orange County School Board Association meeting on legislative actions going on with Jason. That was interesting. And I attended the School Power trustee meeting last night. Lots of new trustees, and they're planning to be here ahead.
Went to the College and Career Advantage slash R O P. This, we, you guys got your updates, the enrollment data, and all the stuff that we were handing out. This is also the catalog, the course catalog. Yes, and but they're real expensive still, and the ones that you guys get, you guys can pass that amongst yourselves. But we do have some great opportunities by high school and also pathways and such. Patty also told us that the Calfor Department of Education is requiring that students who are in a pathway take them in order, which is a little different than we have been doing because we want people to have the opportunity. So, we're gonna work with that and see how we can code things so that they can take the completers and the gap stuff and maybe not have to do it in, or we have to work on that. And then the Calfor Department also approved a seal of C T E completion, which students can add to their resume, which is kind of like the bilingual various things. So, it's just another feather in the cap. So, that was that.
See, I attended the School Power trustee meeting. They continue to be very, very supportive. They're in good financial shape and endowment. And we met some new trustees.
I sat in on that meeting, and so they gave reports. And Dr. Gloria and Mike Morrison also gave reports to the endowment since they have provided a lot of opportunities for us in this district. And we like to keep them updated on the progress they're making on those initiatives. Superintendent Dr. Gloria?
I'll actually hold mine for the update.
No problems. Thank you.
Dr. Bebo? I have one. Tomorrow night, we have a parent event. Everyone's welcome in the Art Theater. Dr. Jerry could bring us a fight. We'd love to have you.
This is similar to when we had spring. I mean, it's what we put.
If it already feels a certain practice, then what I can do is support that message.
And providing that for parents.
Yes.
With child care. With child care. Thank you. So, consent calendar next. Are there any items that programs need to remove? I know I have a note on the minutes of September eleventh, item A, and the minutes of revised minutes of August twenty-first, item B. Other than that, are there any items that programs need to pull? He and I would ask for a motion to approve consent calendar, item C through M. So, move. Are there, is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Any board questions? All is in favor of the motion? Aye. Oppose, here is five oh. Consent calendar, item A, approval of the minutes of September eleventh. Motion, please. So, move. Second. Any board comment on that? All those in favor? Aye.
Dec- decamp.
I don't know. Oh, I have to say, right. That's why we pulled it out. Four oh one. Item B, approval of the revised minutes, August twenty-first. Motion.
Oh, second.
And this is an abstention. Get all those in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstaining. Thank you. We now inform our action item eleven, approval of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty twenty-one's week instructional calendars.
Thank you, Princeton. Okay. So, you have in your packet a copy of the calendars that you asked us to bring back for action at this meeting. You have one recommendation for one proposed calendar for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And you have two versions that you asked us to bring back, so twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Version A and version B.
So, we will begin this action item with public input. I have several cards here. If you filled out a card and didn't pass it up yet, please do so. If you didn't fill one out and want to, they're back there on the table, and then you can pass it up. We will take the public, all the public comment first, and then we will proceed as we normally do with board questions and then motion and board discussion. So, first, Ann Morell.
I need to make one note at the start, because I asked at the last meeting and other meetings that you, that we not clap or we just let people speak and proceed in an orderly fashion so we can use our time the most efficiently. Thank you.
The governing board has been elected by the community to provide leadership and citizen oversight of the district. The board shall ensure that the district is responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of the community. That's your board bylaw. Your philosophy, the needs of the whole child must be addressed as the ability of children to learn is affected by social, health, and economic condition and other factors outside the classroom. The community and district are inextricably connected partners, whereas the community's engagement in issues that impact the schools enhances the district's programs and student learning. Two-way communication with all stakeholders is essential for establishing continuity, support, and shared goals both within the district and with the surrounding community. I feel like this is often the biggest sham. I feel like you all have lied to our faces here, saying that you didn't make up your minds, you hadn't made a decision, you weren't sure what you were gonna do yet, when Ms. Kowalski came in in June with her lesson plans already changed to reflect an earlier start. Now, why would the teachers have already changed their lessons plans if they hadn't been told, "Don't worry, we're gonna shove this through"? Mr. Gloria told a teacher at Elmoreo that she could not air her opinion on her social media because she didn't agree with what you want to do with changing the calendar. That's disgusting. I know that you have pitted, when you're trying to alleviate stress, you've caused a huge rift in this whole community. You've pitted the teachers against teachers, the students against students, parents against teachers, neighbors against neighbors. The most hideous comments are flying back and forth amongst people who had no issue before. I was at Breaker Day, listening to a group of high school girls arguing over this topic that had nothing to do with them because they're seniors. This has been nothing but more stress. You're trying to alleviate the stress. This is gonna be your legacy here, that you divided your community, jeopardized three million dollars worth of scholarship money that goes directly to Laguna Beach high school students. So, you know, if you don't care about that money, then we're done supporting School Power, P T A, all the other stuff. You don't need that money, you don't need my money. If you're not gonna listen to the over, the eight hundred people who are against this, who are afraid to come in here and say anything because they're worried about repercussions, which I've heard from other parents who have felt like they suffered repercussions when disagreeing with people. And I know there's all kinds of teachers who won't say a word because they're worried about repercussions as well. So, you've put a handful of high school teachers and A P students' lives more important than everyone else's. Not a good way to teach students at all.
John Morell?
I guess a bit sideways to my wife. I'm totally for the change. Not kidding.
Don't waste your time.
I will. I just wanna read something. It was all about opportunity. This was an interview. He said it was a chance to be a superintendent of one of the top districts in the state. He said Laguna is a small, high-performing district with strong community support, high academic achievement, and amazing schools all the way around. He said this was similar to his previous district, Irvine and San Diego. I don't need to remind you that was a quote from you, sir. And one other with the L.A. Times. Clearly, there were more benefits to taking the Laguna Beach job than simply working with an amazing school district. No more long-distance commutes, a significantly higher salary, a tiny school with only four schools, natural community, and high achieving kids. Why would we mess with our kids? And I would argue that we all talk about is for the children. They are community members also. They are children, they are students, they're community members. What we are teaching them is this academic push is more important for this minority. This is how I feel. We have students who are athletes, students who are A P students. What about all the rest of them? What about all of the rest of the students, okay? Who love living in this city, who love to be at the beach, who love the summers? We are ripping that out from under them. And I would suggest, and some may not agree with me, but if you're gonna mess with the calendar, take a week out. Let them go back to school after September. Yeah, after Labor Day. And I don't think there is many people, there's eight hundred and fifty people have signed a petition against this. Eight hundred and fifty people. So, you can only imagine there's a lot of people who don't even know there's a petition who haven't signed it. So, if eight hundred and fifty have signed it, that's a, that's a big force. And I think going back to the first meeting I came to when we were kind of divided up and we were gonna talk to everybody in groups, I said divide and conquer, and maybe that was a little over, but I think it was close to truth. We were, somebody let out that, well, we had this discussion in our early meetings with the union back in May or March, or I may not have the date right. But how is it that the union and the board and the, just whoever, is having these conversations, and we are not privy to them until June? I don't get it. I just think there was a, it stinks. The whole thing seems all processed up. The questionnaire, the way that the word, it was written. Nobody asked our input on how to word that questionnaire. And I think that was a huge mistake. So, I'm not for school calendar change.
Clay Leeds?
Hello, my name is Clay Leeds, and I want to be on record as being against the calendar change. My family's been here since nineteen twenty-seven, and my kids are the fifth generation of Laguna leads that have been through here. And, you know, for me, the reason why I'm still here, it's really expensive to be here. I could buy a bigger house and have less stress if I wasn't here in a lot of ways. But, you know, for me, the reason I'm here is because of the culture of Laguna Beach. And I feared that the culture will change in two thousand nineteen because you, the five of you school board members, they're probably planning to make the change, or maybe three, doesn't really matter. It's just half plus one percent or whatever. As you can see, I have a feeling that it's a foregone conclusion, which kind of makes me angry, as angry as John Morielli and Ann Morielli and any of the others here who are opposed to this change. To me, the most important thing about our community is our culture. Culture has to do with words you say to each other, inside jokes that you all get, things that you just rely on when you're talking to someone. Bro, doesn't necessarily mean that you're my brother. It means you're my close friend. And I'm actually good friends and acquaintances with most of the board members that are sitting up here. I've known you for a very long time. My kid's a junior in high school. I also know that a large majority of the parents who were given the survey voted against this change, which means of the amount of people that you surveyed, the largest majority of voting members of this population said no. Now, you have high school students who may have said yes, but those, some of them are, you know, they may be voting members, but most of them are not. And maybe next year, they might be voting members. But I just wanna say that that's, that's not a good statistic to come from if you, if you, if you do the numbers. If you change the calendar so that we end at Christmas time, you'll still be like forty, sixty as far as percentage days. You'll still have a lopsided first semester and a bigger lopsided second semester. And then you'll add a huge amount of pressure to Thanksgiving, which is only four days. And, you know, some of the things that are benefits that are, that would lead me to not wanna do the calendar change are you'd have a longer summer, at least for that period. If you switch it to the way it looks like it's planned, you're actually saying that you're giving a little bit back, but it's actually, week is gonna, the, the school period will start a week later than that because Labor Day is a week later than it is this year. There are business factors, there are cultural factors, there are psychological factors, and all of these types of factors are the kinds of things that are community issues. This is the kind of issue that should actually go before the city of Laguna Beach voters because it affects all of Laguna Beach, not just the school. Thank you.
Mindy Opel?
Hi. My third time speaking here, and I have to agree with what they said. I feel like this is my third meeting, and I come away each time feeling like a decision was made before I spoke at the first one. I have been in this town for almost forty-five years. I graduated from Laguna Beach High School. My children graduated from Laguna Beach High School, and I have grandchildren in the school now at Elmoreo. And I feel like the board, you were elected by the constituency that put you there to represent us, and it's not the majority that is in favor of this. My daughter-in-law wrote an excellent written email to all of you weeks ago, and only Dee even took the courtesy to respond to her. It's sad. You know, she has children in the district. She had a wonderfully thoughtful email to you, and you guys are so disinterested in what your, people you were elected to represent are saying that you didn't even get back. She intended to be here to speak tonight, but the babysitter canceled at the last, so she's not. Laguna is a renowned, world-renowned community, and it's special, and it's different, and that is why so many people come here. It's why I always feel like the person that I am today in a lot of ways was moving to Laguna Beach when I was in high school. And the overarching reason for this calendar change is, is very similar to some weird trend, like when the district approved to have M T V filming and, and send the whole district in a terrible direction for a number of years. This is another trendy thing. When my kids were very young, they were in Long Beach School District, because I lived in Catalina Island at the time. And for two years, when my younger two were in first and second grade, they went to sight-based reading. And when I moved to Laguna, when they were in third grade, I had to get them tutoring. And the district in Long Beach, I thought that was Long Beach when they did it, and they changed back phonics. This is another thing where you are, every meeting I've been in, you're talking stress, stress. Well, A P is something that is not, there's no record that shows those kids are gonna be more successful in adulthood. They'll probably be on more, you know, meds or anxiety-driven. That's what I see with a lot of those kids, because they're being pushed by the parents from an early age to try to grow up faster than they need to. You know, children that are able to work at the pageants or at the sawdust, who are meeting people from around the world, who maybe have a chance to travel with their family. You wanna do something that will really teach kids amazing things? Encourage them to study abroad when they go to college. Don't be cramming to get through there so fast that they don't even have an opportunity to look behind this narrow thing. So, in my opinion, you guys have not thought this through clearly. You're not representing what this community is all about. Laguna Beach is not Irvine. The people in this town appreciate being different. They appreciate having lots of opportunities to excel in many other areas. And please, don't make the third or number one bad decision. And I agree, the legacy, almost nine hundred people signed that petition. And that's the very few people that even know that it exists. You're not representing Laguna in any way, shape, or form. And I was president of the endowment for years and for School Power, P T A. I have a long history.
Trish Sweeney?
Hi, I'm Trish Sweeney. My husband Mike and I come as son of Thurston. I also have three adult stepchildren who went through the Laguna Beach school system, K through twelve. They do not feel starting Labor Day was an issue, including one completed all her A P courses. There's three thousand twenty-nine children in our district, one thousand one hundred and three in high school. Fifty-seven percent want the calendar changed, that was six hundred and twenty-eight. According to Hammer from research, the A P drop rate of twenty percent is due to students putting off their summer requirements. That leaves three hundred and nine A P students out of three thousand twenty-nine in the district, about ten percent. As with the break, some kids need holiday time to study. Some want time because they want finals to end before. Either way, there's stress. Active Minds has four hundred and fifty chapters in high schools and colleges to help. Each year, more than fifteen thousand students join Active Minds. With a student-teacher ratio of twenty-two to one in many resources, we have one of the top high schools in the country. But with the calendar change, many lifeguards, valets, and others will lose their jobs in the middle of August to go back to school. Pageant participation among our kids has been declining for a while. It would only get worse if students have to return well before the pageant ends. We're a tourist town, and we get most visitors over the summer, right through Labor Day. Laguna has attracted many of us because of its sense of community. For those who love the town's character and its quirks, there's no better place to call home. My husband's family has been calling it home since nineteen sixty-one, and we're glad that the things that make it so unique are so loved by people all over the world. Changing the calendar is at odds with who we are as a town. Our family would like the board to keep our current calendar, consider additional campus support, and explore online partnerships with I B C, O C and explore online partnerships with IBC, OCC and Saddleback for AP participants. So those who want to take college prep courses in high school and complete their work in time. I'm hopeful we can come up with solutions that support our families, students, neighbors, artists and our community. Thank you.
Sheri Morgan. Sheri Morgan.
Hi. Um, I've, I want to thank you also for the opportunity. Not only have I been here for many of the meetings, but I also saw the committee. And again, I really feel that I need to, as a committee member, as a community member, as a taxpayer, I feel like I need to urge you to suspend the vote tonight and send this back to committee. The calendar that you're proposing tonight is not the calendar that the committee proposed, which is what you hired, what you put a committee together to form. The committee put together a calendar, it did not go well, it had a lot of pushback. So you asked the administration to work on a calendar. So basically, what you are approving tonight or looking to approve tonight is a calendar that was sort of come together by the committee, driven by the board and worked on by the administration and come back to the board. So if that's kind of what's going on, then what was the point of the committee? Didn't you want stakeholder input? You got it from the students, but when you did a survey for the students, you did not demonstrate to them what the fall semester was going to look like. You didn't tell them that there was eleven to thirteen weeks in between when school started and when that holiday break was going on. You didn't tell them about the fact that there was going to be essays and finals over holiday events. They didn't, they weren't informed that some of the calendar years have actually two weeks ahead of time, not one week. What happens with Wave Warner Day and Breaker Day? There was no exploration with the families and the students and the stakeholders on what a calendar actually looks like because nobody saw a calendar when you put together the survey. I don't know if anybody notices, but on option B for two thousand twenty-one, the Christmas break only has nine days. You've got finals going from Friday, Monday and Tuesday. So in one way to get the eighty days before the holiday break, you're now cutting into Christmas to make sure the holiday, winter break, excuse me, to make sure that we get all those eighty days in. So the board, one of the ideas that the committee came forward with was because we were told that the objective was to reduce stress. Several of you at the last board meeting came up with a with a resource from the Stanford Conference over, over and underprepared, over, over stressed and underprepared. And it actually highlighted block days, time in between classes and a true, a true break as stress reducers. It didn't say exams, it said exams would be one solution, but it didn't say that is the solution. It said it would be something that would lend itself to help facilitate a break at the holidays. So I think what you're trying to push through tonight becomes a snow job. I respect all of you, but I think this calendar is a big mistake. I said that the day I walked into the committee. I said, I think the calendar needs some work. There's too many things that don't line up. I think that it does need to end sooner, the school year, but you've got a whole spring to work with. You've got three weeks, every three weeks you have a break in the spring, the calendar, but not in the fall. You want to give kids a break in the holidays? Look at something else because right now you're going to send these kids into a tizzy. They've got two weeks of Christmas, this isn't college, this is high school. They're in class every day. You give them an exam before the holidays, they've got no time to recoup from the stress of the fall, of the fall semester. Especially the year that you only give them nine days of the Christmas break.
Lisa Williams.
Hello, I'm Lisa Williams, I think I've spoken at one or two of the past meetings that I've had. I agree with everybody who's spoken tonight and I want to bring up some other points. Over the past few weeks, I don't know if any of you had a chance to kind of look and maybe do a little research on this in one or another country, but many other communities are rallying around the same issue. Virginia, New Hampshire, cities and counties in Florida, Atlanta. They're all having issue with situations such as this when the school dates are moved so much earlier that it's affecting the community. Okay, these are tourist-driven towns as well. They rely on tourism industry and, you know, people to come and take vacations and participate in their communities during the summer. And they're having problems with it to the extent that some of them have even gone to, you know, passed laws protecting the start of school before Labor Day. So it seems to me that we're a little late to the game. And this is in addition to what everybody else has said tonight, in trying to move our calendar earlier. The trend is reversing, okay? And I don't even mean to say that let's follow the trend, but let's, let's look. I encourage you to look into a New Hampshire Study Commission that has until November thirtieth, that the governor has allowed for it. And they're going to examine the impact of a post-Labor Day start in nearly a dozen areas, including tourism, academic performance, school athletic programs and tax writing. So this, this is a community issue. I don't think, I mean, the effect that this could have on the end of summer with not only the kids, but even, I'm concerned about the sawdust and the pageant and all these things. And let's, let's encourage our kids to work locally, not send them out to internships that they may not be able to get because the school year doesn't match up. Let's, let's encourage them to be more of a part of this community in any way we can because it's all so special to us. So just start doing some more research. I'd love to see more quantitative data on this before a vote is taken. I think that if you do pass this new calendar night, you're, we're going to be going through the same exercise in the next year or two and you're going to be wishing you didn't do it. So I'm asking for more time, I'm asking for more research. I think we really, you guys really need to get your backs in a row on this because it's, no. It's, it's, this is not the time to do it. So just consider, in addition to everything everyone else has said, what's going around on in the rest of this country and take notes. And I'm going to keep doing that too, in addition to my day job. Thank you.
Carmen Salazar. Oh, sorry, we need to take a vote to continue the request twenty minutes of motion. On favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Carmen Salazar.
Hi, I am a parent of two, well, actually, one elementary school and then one newly middle school aged child. She's at Thurston and it's been very exciting and wonderful so far. I'm against this. I actually haven't met another parent or teacher that is for it. Basically, the driving point to the motion, as I understand it, is that high school AP students need a more accommodating testing schedule. This is kind of a two-part issue. Really, we're going to coddle our children through high school because it's too hard for them to take tests after they have a break? I mean, the overwhelming majority of kids in grades K through eight, this doesn't affect, like, they're being sort of thrown under the bus. Kids in AP classes should have the discipline to study for tests. What the heck are we teaching them if they don't? Hopefully, we're working on cultivating this discipline and self-motivation in the children's K through eight. So when they reach high school, they'll be able to manage their time wisely. I'm an AP test for myself and I was very thankful for the classes that I was able to take and the additional challenges I assumed in doing so. It was my pleasure. And what message are we sending to kids if we make these kinds of plays just to sort of make it slightly easier for them? I think that that part is confusing. And then the bottom line is that there just really aren't enough AP classes to warrant a widespread district change at this time. Let's build our class AP offerings so that kids in the lesser offered subjects have a chance too. If we build the foundation and then it grows and is embraced by the community, then I think we should look at this and talk about these district, district-wide changes. Number two, I've heard anecdotally that this is to accommodate teachers and administrators for children in other districts so that they will be on the same schedule as their children. Well, this speaks to a slightly larger issue. Why are you looking at unified teachers unable to afford to live in this town? This is a broader problem and will not be solved by this band-aid solution. Let's vote on increasing pay for the teachers in our district so that they can afford to live here instead. The third is that the arts on Laguna and the special non-conforming community that we are. I mean, we all know that, it's magical and it's very different. While it's true that less and less artists can afford to live on Laguna, there are still those of us that do and have kids in school here. The summer festival season is still a major source of income for these families. Beginning school before the hectic festivals and it's a real issue that does not seem to be being considered. My daughter would sit on the bus for an hour plus on busy beach afternoons from El Moro to the Boys and Girls Club and the Canyon during the school year without the festival session. This is a crazy amount of time for such a short distance. The extra twenty or thirty minutes of sitting in traffic is not pleasant for the driver or the kids. Do we really need to start school a week or two earlier to exacerbate this issue? For those of us that work full-time jobs at Boys and Girls Club in Laguna, it's an incredible resource. Staff is amazing people. We are not all retirees yet. Please consider working parents in Laguna.
Chris? I always say your last name incorrectly.
Is that why you're just going to say it just because you don't? It's Chris Tebbit.
Tebbit, thank you.
Hi, thanks for listening to all of us tonight. I wanted to reiterate that I'm still neutral on this subject. And I wanted you all to know that I support you. Because I know that this administration, this staff, the board, and I definitely know the principals, all have your finger on the pulse of what's going on with our kids. You spend your work hours thinking about it and working on it. And I know you spend your evenings and your weekends thinking about it and working on it. So I just wanted to make sure you guys know that I trust you. And so you have my trust. And and I, and I know you have the best interest of our kids in your, you know, in the forefront. So that's all I needed.
All set. Pamela Shaper.
Hi, Pamela Shaper, I'm a senior junior. My daughter has attended school in the district, so I don't have any vested interest in future schedules, but I'm here to just represent that I absolutely support the board and all the work that's being done here. It's an emotional topic, it's a very hard topic to achieve everyone's needs. I really don't understand why, and I haven't been to all the meetings and haven't participated as much as others have, but it seems like a fair amount of money and time have been spent. And I really don't know how it could have been done much differently, just as an outside observer. I thought I also didn't pay much attention to the emails in the beginning that might have described a different calendar. I didn't look at those, but it seems to me as there's been plenty of opportunity. And I would also just offer, because I've been here for a while, that we have discussed this issue before. And I kicked myself at the time for not getting more involved in it because I do think the change is warranted. I do have a position on that topic, especially once your kids are in high school. And it is because we don't operate in a silo. It's nice that we are in a unique town, but we are surrounded by towns that perhaps aren't quite as committed to the uniqueness, right? So if you're participating in sports, you're participating in AP testing, which I know is not unique. But other, other students are committed to a schedule that follows along with other school districts that are different than ours and we are very much out of step from what I've observed. And we, I already lose my summer because we, you have to start preparing your AP classes in August, just to keep up. So thank you again and I support the proposed change.
Jackie, I'm not sure of the last name pronunciation. Say it, please.
Shaker.
Shaker, thank you.
Hi there, I have three children, one who is a sophomore at Laguna Beach High School, one who's a senior at another high school and one who goes to middle school outside the district. And I want to thank the board for all the work that they've done. I'm actually very encouraged and I'm actually hoping to bring my son back to the district. And I have my senior who is in the district and then that. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-three with the exception of four years that I was in Virginia. Having been a parent there, I can say that there actually, most parents I knew hated that the school year started after, after Labor Day. It was called King's Dominion Rule. In fact, it's being kind of overturned right now. I think parents said that profits aren't as important as our kids and all the private schools started earlier and the beach was there all year. So that was my perspective on Virginia. I think that we all love the fact that this is a special town and all its uniqueness. My kids are not special though, so fortunately, we just open all year and I told them to have their plan another time besides the last week of August and I think that they can, they can live with that. My daughter goes to the high school here, will probably never take an AP class. And she was the one who was so vocal about really wanting this change. She hated her first Christmas break last year as a freshman. And she wanted to have just off, just like her older sister, who takes a ridiculous amount of AP classes in another school, who really enjoyed it. I can only speak to my personal experience, but I saw with my own eyes and it made a difference. It made a difference in the family dynamic. So I just wanted to say thank you. I do also want to say that I know several people who share my opinion. However, it is sometimes difficult to be forthcoming in a meeting like this because, you know, we're a very accepting town and we don't want to offend people. But I don't feel that I am alone in, in this position. Thank you.
David Flores.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for allowing me to speak. I too am in support of the calendar. My son is a freshman at the high school and I, I think the high school kids do deserve the opportunity to prepare for AP exams. I think high school kids do deserve the opportunity to participate in sports in an equal footing with the kids from other's high schools. And we are one of the few districts that do not provide those kids that opportunity. The AP classes would allow my son two extra weeks of instruction, not time to prepare, but instruction before he takes the AP test. It would also allow him two weeks of practice in his sport before he has to participate. So I think for the sake of the high school kids, I think you should do the right thing by them. I understand the elementary parents. I do really, my son went to El Moro. We loved having Thanksgiving, the two days of that week. And I think you, from what I noticed, you reinstated that. Those two days are, are back on, so they are school days. And I think that, that's a great tradition and I'm glad you did that. But other than that, yes, I'd love my son to have a break at Christmas, to have the semester done with and start fresh in January. Thank you very much.
Lance Neal.
Just back from a cross-country meeting. I'm Lance Neal, the Athletic Director, and I sat and watched a lot of the conversation. And I'm not even going to talk about athletics because that's, that's a given, that it's better for high school athletics. I've been in education a long time. I have three high school graduates who went to five different schools, graduated from three different schools. So one of the constants in education for my children was getting their first semester over at Christmas. And we were on both of those, but that was one that they were all in favor of. You also get into this thing educationally after your Christmas break when your school year drags out and, and keeping the kids motivated and keeping them moved forward. And I've talked to lots of middle school and elementary teachers and lots of them have shared with me the same challenges they have, we have at the high school and those, is those weeks in June is keeping the kids going. Lots of them have described it as herding cats. So I know that this has been pushed, that this is a high school-driven thing. For me, it's not. And again, I had kids who went through all of those. This is an educationally-driven thing. And someone said it's been very emotional. I hope that if you disagree with me on this, you don't take it personally. I'm speaking as an educator. My only motivation is to educate kids and, and it's been hard for me to listen to people point at colleagues who are in the same boat. Colleagues jump on a panel to, to put forward what they believe was in the best educational interest of our kids. And that's been the only motivation of any educator I have spoken to in this district. So we are all coming from one place. We don't have your family issues, but I'll tell you, my kids were on a lot of different schedules and we have great family members, you know, whatever the summer was, we adapted to five different high school districts. So it's out there. So it's out there. It's a challenge for us, and we can make the most of it. And educationally, from my experience and what I've listened to in talking to other educators, this is what's best for our kids. The other piece, you know, the city council may be worried about some of those things. But for me, I'm an educator. And so, you know, I needed to just stand up tonight and say, I've listened to everything. I understand your concerns. I, you know, I see where you're coming from, but I'm coming from an educational perspective. And educationally, it's not close. And again, please, if you disagree, we don't take that personally. I understand your piece. But it's just, that is my piece. And if I were to throw that athletic piece in, there's a whole other piece to it, but I don't even need to. It's a small portion of what we're trying to do for our students. So thank you, guys, for giving me a few minutes. I appreciate all the time everybody has spent on this. Thank you.
Vanessa Turner?
Hi, I am very much against the school calendar change. I have a daughter at Thurston, a daughter at Elmore. Want to reiterate everything that everybody said here tonight that is against the change. Especially telling what Sheri Morgan said, who was on the committee for this, and the fact that she's up here now saying, hey, this isn't a good idea. Or at least let's take a few steps back and kind of review it again. I think that's hugely telling in this situation. I think that we're pushing this forward for, I don't even know the reasons. The AP testing, one of the teachers said, or one of the parents said, who said they're for this, is that they lose their summer anyway because they have to start studying in August anyway. Well, then, we're going to now make everybody lose their summer. If the AP kids need to take, they're going to lose their summer because they're going back to school, or they're going to lose a couple of weeks of summer because they need to, they need to study a little extra. AP kids are overachievers. They're going to do this stuff no matter what. They're going to work hard whether we start in August, whether we start in September. It's just that that's the kind of kids they are, and that's wonderful. To make an entire change, this community, based on that is not okay. Doesn't seem to be acceptable. I think the argument or the reason about having to start or wanting to end the semester prior to winter break, when you say it like that, yes, it's a wonderful, valid reason. However, nobody has shown this is statistically or quantitatively better for these kids. They are going to need to study for finals over Thanksgiving now. They are going to need to study for finals while they're trying to do their college essays that are due, from what I understand, my daughter's going to college next, sorry. That they're going to be having to turn in these essays and applications at the very beginning of January. So all of this is going to be weighed on them during this time that you have now said where they need, they should take the finals prior to winter break, so they can have a break over winter break. I think for some kids, having that break over winter break before and then having finals when they come back, they have two weeks before. It's not like they come back from winter break and they have to take finals on that Monday. They've got time. I think for the vast majority of kids, they would like that extra time to kind of, when they don't have homeworks, and they don't have school athletics, and they don't have everything else on top of them, to kind of take a breather, to take the time to get a little extra studying time before the finals in a couple of weeks. On a personal note, I know this is a very small piece of the community, but athletics have come up a few times. My daughter plays water polo. She's going to be girl water polo there. She has a girl water polo there, but she's going to be hopefully playing for the high school. Water polo season is pretty much year-round. We do not end, Junior Olympics is the end of January, beginning of August. We basically have August as our summer. We have nothing else. So pushing ahead, summer, going back to school mid, you know, third week of August, that completely limits all of these, and not just water polo. It's probably the same for all, everybody keeps talking about sports. You're doing fall sports. Think about the winter sports and the spring sports. The kids that do winter sports, they lose Christmas vacation anyway. They lose ski week anyway. They lose spring break anyway. Now you're going to take away the summer from them as well. Sorry, really, I, I.
Can you finish up, please?
I'm sorry.
The time went off. I just.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, thank you.
That was the last card that I have. If anyone else wishes to speak, you can turn a card in. Please come forward to the podium.
My name is Mark Tullum. I've spoken to the board a number of times in the last month. I prepared for the board four years ago, three years ago, when the board decided they were going to try to change the calendar back then. This is not the first time it's ever been tried. A number of years before that, the stride failed. I grew up in Cora, Elmore, in the sixties. I was pretty much on the same schedule in school as what the schedule is now. The calendar is now in the Beach. The only difference is we didn't have ski week. So we got out of school, what, a full day, a full week before in June. So anybody that wanted to go to community college or something like that, have plenty of time to do that, do it. Ski week, in my opinion, is a waste of time. I'm opposed to the calendar change, always have been. I grew up, and I believe in equality for everyone. And I don't hear much discussion about the elementary school children or the junior high school kids. And they make up the majority of students in the school district. AP students from art, my calculations are about eight to ten percent of the population. That's a very small majority. My daughter had AP classes and had no problem going to school and having Christmas vacation and having AP classes at all. Made no difference. I don't really see, I don't really see the emphasis on AP. I mean, if you want to do it, go ahead and do it. If you don't, don't. So I'm opposed to the calendar change. It's not equal either. It's lopsided. Eighty days of instruction in the fall and a hundred days in the spring, that's lopsided. That favors some students for a short schedule and just favors other students for a short schedule. Hundred days, that's not equal either. That favors some students for a longer schedule and just favors other. Equality is what we have now. Roughly the same amount of days in each semester, ninety, ninety-four, something like that. I've not looked at the statistics. It's equal. So I'm an equal, I'm an equal equality type person. I also know the history of Laguna. The history of Laguna is that the pageants and the festival were all built, their schedules were all built around the school schedule. That's because they encourage students to be involved in the pageant and the festivals. And, you know, saw this festival and all that. You're going to change the schedule. If you change the schedule, you're not going to, you're not going to have that anymore. And I also would say that a lot of people are going to withdraw this order, the school district and the staff financially. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Hi, Kirsten Warner. I just wanted to say that the sound of going back to school is coming off a little negative. I think going back to school is a fun and festive time. And I really felt it this season, going back to school, that it seemed to me, I don't know if it's because of this topic or whatever, but it felt like it dragged out a little bit. The going back to school time period seemed to drag out a little bit more to me than prior years. And it felt like going back to school was a little overdue. I felt the kids were ready. Their friends from around the country, cousins from other places in the, you know, in the state, were posting on, you know, Instagram, social media, their back-to-school pictures. And ours were just kind of waiting to go back to school. And they were curious about their teachers. They were wanting to get together with their friends. They wanted to know who were going to be in their classes. They were really excited about the football games. The football games were really well-attended and super festive, and they were ready. They were ready to go back to school. It felt like the town was really quiet. The festivals were really quiet. And I don't know, this is another topic, but maybe the visitor's bureau needs to look at the, you know, the way that people come into town and travel into town. I don't know if that's something that's going to be proposed down the road. And the calendar of what our community runs on might shift on its own. But I felt like back to school was in the air. And I would like for you to consider one of the changes. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Susan Bond here. I've spoken a few times before and I guess the calendar change. Thank you for being here. And so I have a question for the junior high school principal. Would you tell us how many semester courses there are at Thurston?
We can ask that. You can ask if us and everyone.
Okay, okay, can I ask you?
Well, it would be.
Well, I'm curious. I'm just curious. Because last time, after the issue was brought up of how the, you know, eighty days the first semester and a hundred days the second semester, and then I heard Dr. Valoria and some others talking, you maybe were asking him some questions. So how many courses are there at high school level that fall into that category? Which was a good question on your part. And it seemed to be like, well, there are first democracy and economics and maybe a health course. So it's not that many, so don't worry about it, because, you know, whatever, those kids will manage somehow. So, but then, I'm curious, at junior high school, I'm imagining there are some semester courses as well. So this is just a point that I would think teachers, parents would be concerned with, because, I'll reiterate it, the curriculum of a course is important and the time within that course. And I know most courses are a whole year long, history course, math or grade. So it doesn't make a difference. But when you take a course, government, economics, whatever the courses are at middle school, like, isn't that important that the students would not be taught, would lose twenty days of a course? Like, does anybody care about that? So that's just my, my point, you know? So I guess that's the main point for us to consider again, because, you know, we want our kids to learn whatever classes they're in. So I'd be pleased to hear from the principal over there if she can answer that, or you would answer that sometime. Thank you.
Any other speakers on this decision? Not turn in a card.
Hi, my name is Howard Gilson. I just Ubered from LAX and watched this on the iPhone, so I guess I made it in time. I have a daughter-in-law who's a winner of the Milken Award. Hundred teachers every year get selected for the Milken Award. She had to cut her summer vacation in Maryland off to get back, because DC has adopted this schedule. You know, I heard, I read one comment early on in this process, where somebody said, the College Board did this to us. And then I woke up this morning in New Jersey and looked at student news, and I saw Board Member Brown's article about her leaving the board. I certainly honor her service and very respectfully, I read it with interest. And she said, you know, federal law and state law creates such a small box for the school board to operate in, that we're really pretty much limited what we can do. And this idea that because other people are doing it, one size fits all. Both the federal government and the state government will box us in if we let them. But Board Member Brown, your description, state law and federal law, as boxing us in, is wrong. It only boxes us in if we let it box us in. The College Board only forces us to do this if we let it force us to do this. You know, I'm not really here tonight to talk about whether you do this or don't do this. What I am here to talk about is that we have a pattern here of scripted board meetings. We have a pattern here of members of the board serving on committees, and then the committees then making recommendations. I think anybody that went to the meeting that you had at the library about this earlier, it was very clear that the majority of the board present at that library meeting had made up their mind that we are going to do this, because we determined already that it is in the best interest of students. And if you really believe that it is in the best interest, you know, you probably should vote for it. But I this summer went to Maine, North Carolina, Washington DC, New York, talked with teachers, school board members, students, parents, and every district where they've gone to this new schedule, because there's a lot of, as somebody else said earlier, I was watching in the car, there's a lot of pressure across the nation to do this. And my daughter-in-law, who is living with it, she said, just tell them, when you talk to them, that all the teachers here don't like it and all the parents don't like it, and wish we were back to our old schedule. And I'm, my concern, that may be where we end up on this. I'm more concerned about the lack of transparency and the fact that the deliberations in this process, as far as I can see, have been scripted from the beginning. So that's a concern that I have about the transparency of the process. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Hi, Chad Carter. Sorry for my hardness. I'll hold here as quickly as I can. So I was actually sitting at home, trying to work and have this up on, you know, online on the website, watching it. And I just wanted to come here to say, first of all, that I appreciate Chris, right? Chris's comments. We're here to support you. I'm here to support you and the decision you made. I don't agree with a lot of what's been said about you haven't taken the time for this. You're not looking at the voters who put you in these positions. I'm for this change. I think this changes for the best for our students. We elected you to these positions to look out for our, for our kids. We make, you know, it's hard for us to make decisions now and then. And I do think this changes in the best behavior, best choice for us. In looking at the options, though, one thing I wanted to stress, between version A and version B that you're looking at, I know it was said as well from someone who's opposed to the change at all, but the version B, I'm concerned, because it takes away from that winter break as well. To gain two days of summer, we're giving up four days of a winter break. And so I would encourage you that in voting, which I hope you would vote for this change, that you stick with the original committee calendar or the version A choice for that 2021 year. And however it goes, I will support you on that decision as well. Thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to speak? Anyone? Thank you. You have any board questions? In fact, did that include you as also a participant?
Then we need to have a motion, because we already have two calendars, so it might be.
I'd like to approve the nineteen twenty calendar separately and discuss the two versions. So that's what the my motion for nineteen twenty as presented.
So you're making a motion to approve the nineteen twenty calendar?
Correct. There's only one sample.
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Thank you, as presented.
So second for that?
Second.
Peggy and then Kayla, second. So more discussion?
I'll start a little bit. Thank you all for coming. I know we have different opinions. And if I have a different opinion than yours, I hope you don't think of me as an enemy. I'm not your enemy. I have a different opinion. And I take this job really seriously about making decisions for the students. The goal of that committee, because I served on it, I'm a parent as well as a board member, we had several goals. The goals were to end the first semester before winter break, so you have to go backwards eighty days. That present calendar, even though it's compromised and different, does that. Another goal was the school year ending earlier, so students can access other educational opportunities, because we do not operate within a silo. We operate bouncing off many other existing opportunities. This calendar does that. Students will have more instructional days prior to all high stakes testing, all students. This is not about AP students only. And I really am sad that the emails always reference AP. Eighteen hundred students will be affected by this semester change, because they go to Thurston and the high school. And that will go to a semester that will end at winter break, and they will have a true winter break. Students will have less school days after all high stakes testing, which is a better investment in our instructional time for our teachers. Professional development days are built into the calendar, so we have fewer subs. Students then have more quality instruction from their teachers. All those items were goals of the committee. I support the original committee recommendation. That's not what's being brought today. There's been some compromise on it, putting back in Thanksgiving. I believe that as a unique community, we are flexible, we are adaptable for our students and I support this calendar. And if you disagree with me, I respect that, but I'm not your enemy. I have a different opinion and I think this is better for kids.
I didn't have an opinion until being able to discuss with the board. I was in really good step or really good drive at home. I was, I was unfenced but leaning towards the change. And, and having an opinion is what we're supposed to do. And we're supposed to space those opinions on what's best for the kids and what's best practices. And the calendars, when the alumni attendance are, we still have that calendar, but the world has moved. Everyone else, we've intersected with, they've moved. And so what I hear parents saying, and I don't know how to say it, and it's not to upset anyone, it's not to hurting one's feelings, it's just where I've come after listening and reading and talking with fellow board members, here, because sometimes we get to talk together, he's here. And is that there is this undue stress that our calendar causes our students. I don't have one, I don't, it doesn't matter to me in the sense of about my kid. My kid's not going to be affected by this. But it is this undue stress that we've put on them. And do we keep that undue stress on them or do we shift it to the parents and the teachers? And I think the adults can handle it much better than the kids can. They're teenagers and they're in their most stressful, vulnerable time of their life. And hopefully the most stressful one, but it doesn't continue on that way for them. You know, some people choose professions that will, that could continue to happen for them, but, but hopefully not at the degree they feel they're junior and senior year. And, and I think it's selfish to ask that we don't do what's best for them because we want something else. The beach isn't going away and I don't care about the profits of the city. I care about the kids. We're voted in for the kids and the city needs to take care of the city. And I think that they will change their schedules to align with our schedules. They want our kids to work there and they're still going to fund scholarships. They're still connected to schools, arts not going away. Unless it's not going to do AP kids. And it hurts the AP kids' feelings every time everybody, oh, they're only ten percent, we don't care about them. Every, we want every child in high school to have AP. We have AP classes in the freshman year now. We want them to take at least one class because they want to and experience what college is going to be like. They decide what their path will, do they want to move to one of the CTEs? Do they want to just go get a certificate and start working right after high school? Or do they want to go off to college? We want them to have the choice and this gives them a better opportunity to have that choice. And the kids who drop out of those AP classes but they didn't do the summer work, we want them in there. They're at a disadvantage. We want them in those classes. And this is the best way. Here, here.
You don't need to make comments in the audience.
You know what? I don't think you guys hear anything anybody says.
We do listen to you, but your behavior is disrespectful.
You have your own judgment.
It is disrespectful when I've known you for almost twenty years and now when I see you, you look at your phone.
Yeah, you don't know what.
So don't tell me you're not my enemy. You're definitely not helping.
Excuse me, would you please leave quietly?
I am.
Thank you.
I am leaving.
Wow. I am a beach person. I am someone who loves this town for all its uniqueness and all the incredible things it has to offer. But I also want to listen to our kids, our students. I missed the August twenty first board meeting because I had to, I had to spend time with my husband, which is why I'm not running again because I have to spend time with my husband, what I love doing. But I looked, I watched the video and I was appalled at certain points, but I was also so grateful that we have a group of students who are articulate, who are brave, who are engaged and not, not willing to compromise their opinions. Ultimately, they are who we are here to serve. Yes, they have parents and caregivers and guardians, but the students are, are who we are here to serve. Being on the CCA board as well, it, it is difficult. We do have issues making things meld and blend and it does put our kids at a disadvantage. Somebody said that we, we even entertain this because most of our teachers don't live in the district. Even if they don't live in the district, they have the opportunity to bring their kids here to school and most of them do. So, so that really is, is not even an issue. And finally, for twelve years, I've listened, Howard, to you tell me that we're not transparent and we don't do the right job and we don't obey government and we don't do various things. And frankly, I'm tired of it. We absolutely, one hundred percent obey the rules, which is why we, we haven't discussed this outside of these, these walls. And, and it is a transparent process. We do the best we can with what we have, which is we created a committee. Yes, there were two board members on there. I wasn't one of them. So all I heard is then what came out and what, as we discussed in various things. Dean, I have no idea. Carol didn't have any idea. And so when you accuse us of not being transparent, I find that offensive. I find it offensive to my, no, it's my term. I find it offensive to my, to my fellow, to my administrators and to my fellow board members. And, and, and.
Well, as with board members.
Excuse me, you have to add a word, Howard. I, I, I.
It's not a word or a response.
Yes, it is.
I have waited, I have waited patiently. You are a great asset to the community. You, you have given your heart and soul. But I am going to, for once, stand up for the ladies and the previous gentlemen that I have served with.
May I respond?
No.
You have the authority to allow public commentary.
Public comment is closed on this item.
The board has the authority under the law to allow public commentary to the deliberations. And I'd like to respond.
No, we should public comment and public comment is closed.
Jen, I, I apologize, I spoke out of turn. But somebody needs to see that.
You didn't speak out of turn. Excuse me, Dee.
I'm so sad that this is separating our community. I know many parents and families are opposed for many reasons. The traffic, the festivals, the special end of summer, family traditions. I agree that the end of summer is magical. Usually the water and the air temperature are warm, it's not crowded. And I think that's healthy for kids. Watching the little Brahms out in the waves, strong and happy, looking out for each other, getting knocked around, still going back in, it builds their resilience. And I think that value is priceless. I think that's part of what we want for our kids. We're lucky to provide living here. I also, though, see that a big problem we're trying to solve is student stress. And part of that is academic. It's not all academic and this change may help some of it. It's not going to resolve all the stress. Changing the calendar is one way to address stress caused by not enough time for material and AP classes, a way to have a stress-free winter break, which is important to a lot of us. And, but we need other ways to address the extreme stress and anxiety that some of our students have. The loss of opportunities in June is really important to me. The community college classes, internships. I know this year at the graduation ceremony, a couple of my students that I taught, because I taught here for many years, couldn't participate in graduation due to commitments with freshman orientation. And I hate that they couldn't go through their graduation. I also think it's really important to listen to the students' viewpoint and many of the students, and granted, high school students, want this change. We didn't ask elementary, middle school. I do think we need to get out a week earlier to give our students those opportunities in June, but start as late as possible to make that happen. Like Sheri said, I wish we had a more creative solution. I wish it was put out to a vote by the community. I don't want to make this decision. But I, I think we, we need to try this, but I also think that we're not sure what difference this is going to make. We don't know if there's going to be unintended consequences. Like, for instance, starting earlier in the summer, maybe some parents will just hold their kids out for a week and our attendance will go down. And that won't be good either. So if this goes through, I would like there to be a follow-up survey, a list in June of what things students actually miss because we get out late. And then next year, a survey of AP students that took AP classes this year and the next year to see if this really helped them. And a survey of kids about if they really have this stress-free winter break, if that's worth coming back to school early for and how that helps them. And look at that data and make further decisions.
Hi, group. I would like to, I'll try to get this one, please. One sec. Okay, so as a senior, this schedule will not affect me at all. I have a brother who's a freshman, so he's all thirteen, so he goes to each M and A, so he's going to the usual activity at all. If not now, when? I worked on some points, like just speaking my mind. Parents complaining about school starting a little over a week earlier gives the idea that school isn't somewhere students should feel excited about going. That's a point my mom had shared earlier when she spoke. We didn't really, I don't know, we have the same opinion, but our opinions didn't make change on others. So that's, it's tough to talk to her about that. If students want it, why don't parents support, support what the students want? If the students are using their voices, why aren't they being heard or considered? At the Child Success Conference, I talked to students where the calendar change took place and I asked about their situations. One school said that originally the parents and community were hesitant. Their Board of Education listened to the students and what they thought would be more beneficial in the long run. The calendar change with students I spoke with observed that students all around were happier, less stressed and changed their community for the better. They have seen mental illnesses become less prominent and increases in attempted suicide in their communities. I have taken AP classes. I have done well in that, but I wouldn't consider myself an AP student because I've only taken one last year and one this year. But I have plenty of other things to keep me busy that if I started earlier, I can have a easier schedule, everything would be, I don't know, it starts in summer anyway, so be more organized. I don't know, that's it.
May, can you?
Nice.
Sure. Sure. What, one was, thank you. One was on the change.org petition, about eight hundred fifty, nine hundred and four. The names weren't released, they're held back and anyone in the world can sign them and you can sign multiple times. I guess I've been there all day and just signed it and signed it and signed it and signed it and added a hundred names. So it's not representative of our community. The survey we took was representative of our community, but change.org is not because you start a petition, you can decide the structure and what you want it to be shared. So that one. And then the second, when I've talked with people about that winter break, having children, my own personal children, but working with other families as well, when you have that clean break, everybody calls it clean break and there's a reason they call it clean break. So when you have that two weeks off, everyone's like, why is that important? It's not. But if you have a child with adverse behavior and they finish their finals and they're in high school and you want them to go to college, you want them to change whatever that adverse behavior is and you want them to live whatever dream you hope they have or have the opportunity to live whatever dream they want to have, they have. You take advantage of that two weeks and you send your kid to whatever support they need. And if it goes to extra for two weeks, it's not really a game changer, it's not really a problem because finals are over. And in our community, parents tend to do it less. In other communities where they have that clean break, they don't hesitate to take their kids and give them help and then wait till February hoping to kind of keep, just keep them going longer. And there's, there's something about that, just in their minds, we're students, it's kind of like, we just kind of, we had a reduction in suicidal aviation today. It allows, with other adverse behaviors, it allows them to get help. It allows them to finish something, have some success and they finished it and go get help. It allows the parents the freedom to say, yes, that's what's best for my kid versus, oh, how am I going to explain on that that they didn't finish the semester? I need to keep them going until finals. So it, it's significant. And it's, when there's undue stress, it's something that we can change. I just enjoy this.
Okay. I have a number of comments to also make to add to this. There are two that I feel are information that I've heard shared that I feel is incorrect in light of the past year that's spent on this project. First one starts with that, actually. When a district is in negotiations with their unions, those are not public meetings. There are not board members in those meetings. There was a request that came out of negotiations in the spring of 2017 and the superintendent brought it to the board to ask if the board was interested in having the district undertake the task of looking at this. And the proposal was to set up a committee with different representatives from all the entities and that that committee would be charged with, under the leadership of Mrs. Winston, that not discuss what was being discussed in that so that some of the things that we've seen here tonight would not spiral out of control before there's a recommendation from the committee. So the recommendation came from the committee and I would just like to add, I know that Sheri, that you've, you know, have some strong opinions now on this and I did compliment you at one meeting, that we were, the type of district we were, that we didn't have a problem with you standing up and saying that you had a problem with the committee recommendation, even though the majority sent that recommendation out. But tonight you were indicating that there was some kind of administration push and change in it. The changes and the revisions were the result of coming to the study session and then the subsequent one, two, three meetings where we discussed this, where the board would say, okay, we've heard what people say, so how can we tweak what came out of the committee so that it's more palatable to more people or overriding that, that it works better for the students? It was not something behind the scenes where all of a sudden the committee recommendation was tweaked in a way that the committee would not approve it. And I just, I feel that, that's how I heard what you said and I just wanted to clarify that that is not, that's not what happened. And, and I would agree with Keta. This has been one of the most transparent processes. It was five years ago when this was brought forward by a different superintendent, without study, without research, without data, without surveys. The board at that time, Keta and I were on it. We were, in a sense, hit with that, with the concept that it was coming from the teachers as an educational benefit for students and that is why we supported it. When it fell apart right after that because of the things, no study, no research, no data behind it, that decision was rescinded. It was not rescinded because of a, of a negative outcry of you did something really terrible to our summer. It was a basis that it was, it was not presented well. This is a whole different administration. This, as I said, this has basically been about a year of work that's gone into this. It doesn't mean that it couldn't be voted down. It just means that it, I want to validate the fact that it's, it's been an open and transparent process. In fact, when, another meeting that we had, when you spoke to us on this, this issue, Mr. Hills, you encouraged us, if we felt it was best educationally, to have the courage to approve it. So I, you know, I think it's a little bit disingenuous to now say that we are having a process that's not transparent because we certainly have heard from a lot of these folks time and time again and I think we've listened carefully, we've made pages of notes and we have changed what's been presented from what came out of the committee in an attempt to make it better. There was another comment made, which I just think is really hard when you've been involved with something for a long time and you know what's accurate. This is like a sign step, I'm sorry for this, but it's something that I was involved in that has always rankled me. The Board of Education in this district never gave permission to MTV. That is not true and it, there was never an approval and there was never assigned contracts. The city, actually, the Chamber of Commerce loved it, but the board, but the school board did not approve it.
Did you vote on it? There was a unanimous vote to offer us, the superintendent, to sign the contract.
No, we did not.
Yes, there was, it's a matter of record. Yes, there was, it's a matter of record.
Well, we said, we allowed it.
You changed mine.
Excuse me, that's so off topic, because we didn't change it.
Well, you're breaking up the climate, so you guys are moving forward and then changing.
We never approved a contract with MTV.
Because of repercussions, but it was moving to that, right?
Excuse me, I will not argue with you, you're out of order. Wait, you're out of my, I'm making my comments, you had your turn. Excuse me, you both are out of order.
You called me dishonest.
Excuse, I did not call you dishonest.
You said this is, that is dishonest.
Excuse me, Howard, you are out of order.
I'm requesting to be heard.
No. Okay, I want to get back to what's really the topic at hand here, which is, we are concerned for all students. This has gotten sidetracked with the concept that others mentioned with AP students. It's not about AP students, it's about all students. Some people have told us that their kids just breeze through with what we have currently, APU, no problem. What about the ones who didn't? We need to address, if this helps those students, then it's important. Our students perform dynamically here. They have, they step up, they do the work, they get, they take the classes, they get great scores, they get into great colleges. We know that happens. The discussion out of the committee was not about improving our scores. In fact, early on, that question was asked. No, that's not what this is about. It's about making it a better process for students when they get to that high achievement. That maybe we were missing some steps along the way that it was, that we could alleviate this kind of. But we, we weren't looking to increase improvement because the performance, because it's great here. The, Mrs. Herman had commented on that survey. I think that, as so much is on social media now, if we don't see it and we can't validate it, we can't trust it. It's our responsibility, when we get data from the district, that we can see that data, we can verify that data, and we can validate it. And that, that doesn't happen with that online survey, because there isn't any data that came with it. I just want to step back and think, when I think of the people who spoke here, who've been here for a long time, because I also have been here for a long time, there have been a lot of changes. Laguna was, before it called itself unique, it just was. It was more eclectic, it was more accepting. It was a great community in that sense. I never sensed that any part of the community felt that they were being disenfranchised, or another part felt that they were entitled, or whatever. It was really a very supportive community. And that was a long time ago. It has changed in that sense. The community has specialized itself for whatever reasons. And I see a lot of change. There are things that I saw change in Laguna outside the schools that I'm saying I would not, I'd like to see. I liked the old Main Beach. We had a roller rink, we had some very interesting buildings across the boardwalk. We had a coffee shop that people frequented, Benson's. There was a group in town that wanted this window to the sea. They got what they wanted. There were others of us that would have liked to see some of that old stuff date because it was interesting. It was like you'd see in other old beach communities. You don't always get what you want. Some people do, some people don't. I would, I'd love to have a J.C. Penney and a Sprouse Reeds on Broadway. I like Baskin Robbins, I like Swinson's on Broadway. So we have lost a lot of really more community-serving. We had a number of coffee shops in town, we had Denny's, we now have a hotel. So the community has changed. And it may, it may be unique in some sense, because many communities feel they're unique for whatever they offer. A mountain community certainly feels it's unique for what it offers. And I'm not disputing that, I'm just saying that that cannot be, educationally, our driving force. Because Laguna will remain what it is. It's going to be a hundred and eighty-day school year. The school year isn't going to change. So where it fits into the months of what has been a classic summer vacation, it was, it has been edging toward Labor Day, and we now start the Tuesday after Labor Day, for a number of years. It used to be not till the second week after Labor Day. So it's, you know, we have seen changes. And within the school, we had changed, we, I thought again, because I like historical stuff. We lost our interesting old school building on that side of Park Avenue so that we could move the pool out of the quad over to the other side, have a larger pool, share it with the community. And it was better educationally than to have PE classes in the pool while the science classes were trying to go on a flip-flop. It was the same way that they moved all the lockers out of the senior quad. And I will tell you that some, some younger kids had seen their older siblings go to school in lockers, said, wait a minute, we want lockers, we didn't get lockers, this isn't, you know. So they didn't like that change. School used to be wide open. If you forgot something in your locker on the weekend, you can go and get it. What did we do? We went to classroom and home textbooks, so students didn't have to cart those back in backpacks because that's not supposed to be more than ten percent of the body weight, which is almost impossible with five textbooks. So change has happened. It's just that those changes, I guess, didn't really stir that many people up. And I don't, and it's, sometimes I think, if the school year is going to stay a hundred and eighty days, I don't, it's hard to see that that shift of the days of where they fall is going to have that significant of an impact on what families are used to doing. And the last point that I will make to reference that is, for my family, we experienced what is a huge change in the school district. And that is the closing of Aliso School. That is very significant. But, and I was part of a large parent group. We had packed meetings in the Artist Theater. I was not on the board. I was, that was our neighborhood school. That was a neighborhood school for Three Arch Bay. Three Arch Bay is on the bustail moral.
It was my neighborhood.
It was a neighborhood, right, you went there. But the, and I want to share this ahead of time, because I thought it was significant. We lost that vote to keep the school open. The board still voted to close the school, which for any community, any district, is huge. Parent group, the nucleus parent group, said afterwards, we did our best, we lost, and now we're going to make the best we can for our children. Because we are the people that are upset about this, more than our children. Children are pretty adaptable. So we will make sure that they, that we don't hold that over them, and that we don't keep this negative stuck up. And then it went very well, because the district allowed people to choose which of the two schools that they, for that first transition, the separate kids to. I think it's really incumbent upon us as parents and adults to know that we did our best. I was very sorry to see some of this real negative. It's not a them and us, it seems like it's a them and us, it does to me. Except I've had a lot of comments made to me at back-to-school nights, and no one has been angry with me, which I really appreciate. I know that, I feel like I see people that I know are opposed to this, but they're still pleasant and polite. And that's, that's at the heart of it, because that's what we want to pass on to our kids. And I will say, it is, it is an educational decision. It may not seem like that, but that's what drives it.
When the word, may I respond to what was said?
We're not opening the public comment again.
You have the discretion to do so.
Yes, but we're not opening the public comment on this item.
Then I guess we'll talk about it when we get to the bullying policy on the next item.
Okay, you may sneak into that policy.
Well, since there's been bullying going on here tonight, I would probably.
You, you, outside of this discussion, what you're asking to do is to engage in dialogue with Mrs. Brown, and that will not happen under, excuse me, under this item. If you want to do it another time, but not under this item at this time. No, we're not, I did not ask that question, that question wasn't asked. Your question was heard, but then, Cindy Williams, you should ask that as the Ms. Soler.
I don't think you can answer that off the top of your head. You could not get email heard. But you could, six, 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 six electives. You better say it straight, in eighth grade. That's it, okay.
And Jake, may I say one more thing for Charlie listening?
Yes.
So I know, being much newer than you, much, much newer in this position. Oh, thank you, than you. When I started, the big task was to hire the new superintendent. And everyone got together at the community, and they all shared what they wanted. And I just feel that we heard them, we hired the best candidate available, and I actually think one of the best candidates in, I don't know in the nation, but I know in the state of California. And, and he put together an amazing team of people passionate about education. But then when there's something we don't like, we want to, we want to challenge others, say it's wrong, it's just, it's odd, it's odd, it's an odd feeling to me. And that's, it makes me uncomfortable in that sense. But I trust our educators, I trust that I, I, I should never go in a classroom and educate someone, that is not my role. But I trust these people who have educational backgrounds, and that they enter this with passion, and that they're doing it in the best interest of the children, and I trust these educators. And so I, I guess I ended up on loss. When I heard you speak, I kind of felt like maybe that wasn't so in the past. I get, you read that feeling, you regathered and you moved on with what was best for kids. And so I just felt like we did listen, and we're not accused of that, so. And resolve is what someone wants, so that's where I kind of agree.
Victoria's abstaining in the motion.
We have a motion, Mrs. Wolf moved to approve the 2019-2020 calendar as presented, Mrs. Brown seconded.
So Piper has our single rep, this is referring to vote.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five votes. We have the 2021 calendar versus A and B, so is there a motion?
On that, I would say.
Or can we move to, I'd like to move just to approved version A.
Thank you.
Or do you have to, if they have a discussion about this?
Yeah, we will with the options. So we have to move that again? If you want to move to approve this one option, you can do that. Okay.
I, I'd like to move to approved version A.
Second.
So taking the motions, and Carol seconded.
So 2020, 2021, version A.
Can we, can we discuss version B then, or no? So we are still discussing version B? Okay, so I should. I say version A, we've got a choice, because I think having, I think I have these two days hanging over there. I mean, I like.
Piper, you still have two.
All right, um.
I just, she has version A and B over here.
Okay. Um, I prefer version A because it has the full week of winter break off in the first week. And then, a lot of students end the week returning from Christmas holiday for winter break, apologies. Also, it's just, maybe the safe thing is Thanksgiving. People will be missing it anyways for the family obligations, so.
So don't we have a shot?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, sure. So I prefer version A because I think when we were in calendar committee, we were looking at quality instruction days, days that you have a higher attendance. I fear when you bounce into version B and have that Monday, Tuesday, it's a little bit wonky, is going to be my word, for finals right then. But I think the crisp end, to have the full two weeks off at winter break, is, is a more solid instructional calendar for teachers, for students. I think it has a crisp end, so I prefer one hundred percent version A.
I agree, and, and, and I agree, and I think that this is the first step in many conversations around bell schedule and other things, which begins the process. So, and I agree with you.
So version B, the extra day that the teachers come back, but the students don't, makes a nine-day student holiday.
Was that a question me, or?
Is that a question? Yeah.
So if you look at version A, essentially, it would be two full weeks plus that additional Monday. Under version B, it would be, Monday is still there as it is on version A, and there's just two less days on the holiday. So, so version A, it would actually have.
It's like a straight break. I mean, if you start two days later, then you have to pick those two days up at Christmas, right?
Yeah, so the students, it would be eleven days of break under A, it would be nine days under B, does that make sense?
Yes.
Because it's two days.
Okay, well, I really dislike starting August twenty-fourth, but I understand, I want students to have two full weeks on the Christmas, the winter break. I was really leaning for version B until I had some communication about the fact that that eliminates a weekend also. So it definitely affects the weeks, more than just the days of the week off school, it takes out that weekend. And that, that did resonate with me, as, because when I was, I was of the same opinion that you were, that I really wanted to keep the start as, you know. Close late as possible. Late as possible into August, but then, like you said, that resonated with me. By doing that, you eliminate the weekend. So that's, that was effective. People saw great. That's really the comments that I have.
So you ready to vote? Piper, you have the.
Yes.
Okay. Was in favor?
Aye.
Close. Five votes. Twenty, 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 twenty-one, version A.
Take a break to go.
Five-minute break. Okay, we're resuming our public meeting, and we're back to information item nine, opening the 2018-19 school year report, Dr. Gloria.
There we go. Well, welcome back. It's all delayed, obviously, being that it's September twenty-fifth. But I want to take this opportunity and provide just a brief update regarding our opening of schools. We have a really strong opening. Very proud of all the work that went into that. And I know that in the past board meetings, we talked a little bit about all that work that goes into it, but you'll see, you're just a little bit of a visual display of the work that will be accomplished, and just kind of what we have on tap for the rest of the school year. But I'll try and keep it short and sweet as possible. So, again, just review, visiting our vision as a school district, and the board's vision is taking ownership of each child's learning in our schools, accepting their limited potential. You'll see, again, the running footer or header of the power of us really together. We know that we can make a big difference to the lives of our students. The mission is, again, each student gains knowledge and experience, and world perspectives that create lifelong learning. We know that this world is so interconnected now, it continues to grow. Piper is going to be walking into a job market that none of us have ever had to be a part of, and Piper's brother's going to walk into a job market that Piper didn't have to walk into. It's, it's changing so rapidly that I believe our mission continues to be trying to stay up with the changes, and we know how challenging that can be. So I appreciate all of our staff, their work in trying to keep up with that ever-changing world that we live in, to keep our students competitive. Our focus continues to be every student, every day, continuous improvement, and relationships matter to that end. We have done a lot of work this past year around attendance, and getting our students to school, around continuous improvement, really creating better processes. We have done a lot of work this past year around attendance, attendance and getting our students to school, um, around continuous improvement, really creating better processes, uh, around attendances, for example. And relationships matter, we started off the year last year with, uh, a lot of work with our school sites around that topic. Um, we have continued that work, uh, we've worked with ADL, as you saw at the last board meeting. Those positive relationships that happen inside of our classrooms and outside on our fields, uh, really are, will make a difference in the lives of our students. And oftentimes, are the reason our students can come to school and they connect with somebody on our campus. So those areas continue to be the areas that we focus on as we go into this next school year. The principals have all done great work around this, um, I appreciate both our associations and their work in supporting this work as well. Um, this, last year, I just highlighted a couple of things that I think really stood out to us, um, again, with more support, adding our social emotional support for our students, which we talked about. As you can see, they had a lot of student contacts. That might have been, uh, just a check-in with a student to see how they're doing, or it could have been an hour-long, two-hour-long, three-hour-long conversation with a student who's really in need. Uh, we did our universal screening, so really to try to find and address student, uh, concerns right off the bat. Which puts us really, uh, ahead of most other districts in the state of California and I don't argue in the United States, where we are using a screener to help identify our students, um, and areas where they're doing well as well. So it's not just a deficit model, it's also a strengths model to show where your student, um, is, is really being, uh, successful in their social emotional work. And then again, with our second step curriculum, obviously with any kind of curriculum implementation, there's, uh, there's things that we can do better on, and that's where continuous improvement comes along, and that's what we're gonna continue to do. We looked at the K5 implementation, look for opportunities to make it even better as we move forward. And thanks to, uh, all the work, both at the high school, elementary and middle school, and, and the work of the instructional services department, bringing in speakers to support, uh, our parent education, and also our own education in many ways. And I appreciate we, we had the opportunity to hear, uh, from Paul Kanarak and from Julie Lithcarrane, uh, as a leadership group, and just really powerful to, to hear the same message as the group of talk about it. This is accomplishments of our staff, um, and our students, I'm not gonna read them to you, uh, but just more recently, uh, our staff attended the Department of Education Green Ribbon School Award, um, at the US Department of Education. So kudos to all of the folks that are involved in that, a top of the world, major families, uh, out there in the garden all the time. Um, we, we toured Tom Torleksen's, uh, current state superintendent, who will no longer be at the end of, uh, his tenure here. He was just blown away to see such an amazing space for kids to learn in, and then to find out that we actually have two gardens on campus, um, he was even more blown away. So, again, just, uh, thanks to all the folks that work up there, thanks to Mike and his staff and, and, uh, really the person who wrote a significant amount, uh, of that grant, Mr. Dixon, um, for really highlighting the work that goes on in our schools and our school districts. Some of those also, I pointed out at the PTA, um, a couple of the awards, the University of Chicago Outstanding Educator Award. We oftentimes have our students nominate teachers for the difference that they make in their lives. It can't be any more impactful to have a student graduate, uh, to then in turn reflect on the person who made a difference in their life. And to then go out of their way to write, uh, to, uh, the scholarship or whatever it may be, award, and say, this person made a huge difference in my life. And, uh, the university's become much better at honoring folks for that. And, um, having witnessed, uh, this in some of my other, uh, jobs, I have just, I've seen teachers come to tears because they don't always get that thank you. And sometimes they don't always think that the student who they made an impact on felt that impact at that time. And so, uh, again, just, uh, just accomplishments of staff, students, um, and that's just a very short list. When I asked people to make a list, I asked on a Karen to make a list, it was very long, so I, I kind of cut it down just for sake of, uh, I'm not trying to be too braggy about all the great work going on in our district, so. Physical strength, again, uh, thanks to the school board and, uh, thanks to the business department on our school sites for, uh, the work that they do. We have great fund balances, maintaining those, which we all know is really important, I think Prop 5 would be something we'll talk about today, um, or this evening. Our growth in revenue was expected at about 4.5% for 1819, um, we're estimating 54.3 million dollars in estimated tax, uh, property tax revenue. Areas focused for our instructional services department and our school sites, because this is where the, the most important stuff happens in those four walls on our classrooms, uh, is related to the learning community work, uh, of our teachers. And, um, we kicked off the school year with that, we had a learning community, uh, re, revamp and, and just, uh, good solid conversations at all four of our school sites about what does it mean to be a learning community? How will we use that to focus on outcomes for students? And, um, really the collaboration, and it goes back to, again, relationships, uh, with our teachers and our instructional aides and those people in and inside our classrooms and outside of our classrooms, uh, to really make a difference in the lives of our, uh, our students on a non-going basis. We have a lot of work still left to do in NGSS at the high school level related to what's the pathway going to look like, and I appreciate all the time and energy that our science department has spent and Dr. Allman, uh, Dr. O'Deeple on, on that area. Again, in continuous improvement, we don't shy away from areas that we can improve in, um, we look at, and we examine and we're looking to move forward, and that's what we're doing. With that, we also adopted the LA-ELD curriculum, we finished that, that last year. I know the elementary school principals can tell you, there was a, it was a journey, it always is, um, and we came out of that at the very end, and I felt like, uh, the feedback I received from day one, when there was a lot of overwhelmed faces in the classroom saying, this is really different than what we're used to. It's very rigorous to where our students ended up and where our staff ended up, um, it's just, again, a testament to the great work that our teachers are doing and our, and our leaders are doing inside, uh, their schools to make that process one that's very meaningful. And to help our teachers along the way, understand, we can do this together, and let's work through that. So again, appreciate everyone's work around that, and as we always know, the next one's on the horizon, we have history, social science, and we have science. So we will continue that work and continue to, to lean on our, uh, learning communities to accomplish that work. Couple of things that I think are important for, uh, assessment data highlights, we have been working very hard to increase access and opportunities for our students. This is just one indicator of that, uh, we have, uh, more students, uh, taking more exams, again, giving them that opportunity in high school to know what a college class is like. As Piper mentioned, she took, you know, she took one last year, she's taking one this year. Uh, I don't believe that there's an AP student, um, definition, we have expanded, and one of the reasons you see so many more exams in there, we, we've expanded our AP opportunities, we expanded them again this year. Uh, we have, uh, the addition of two more AP classes that we're offering now, uh, really trying to re, reach our students in a variety of ways, APR History was added this year, uh, AP Computer Science, um, that's on the heels of AP Computer Science Principles. So really, we're looking for opportunities, so that is a, a really good graphic, I think, of showing that we're not just focusing on academic, uh, typical US history or whatever it may be, we're looking for opportunities in electives for students. We're working on our attendance, we know that in, in order to actually, uh, be able to teach in our classrooms, we need to have our students in their seats. And we know that chronic absenteeism, which is a new definition that the state has put forward as a metric for us as a school district, is an area that we can continue to move upon, and we did last year, and so again, tested the work at our school sites. Uh, we will continue that work, and, um, I, I appreciate the board's support in that. I know Dr. Allman is, uh, and his staff, and the new addition of the attendance person in his office, are very much focused on, uh, really continuing to identify our students early, intervene and make sure that they're in their classrooms in order to get the work that they need to do. Our preliminary crash results, I say preliminary because they still are not public, um, and validated, um, and that would be, uh, coming up here, I think the window will close for that, and it'll be public sometime in the next week. Uh, we just received an email today to that, uh, so we'll be able to actually share out the specific results. But overall, we've seen a, uh, plus seven, uh, growth, which, uh, is great to see. Many school districts are complaining that the smarter balances receive stagnant results over time, we've seen some growth and, um, that's a, a nice thing to see over time. Another great indicator, uh, that, uh, we are continuing to prepare our students for UC in college, whether they want to go or not, we should prepare them for that. Uh, and our eligibility rate is up to 77%, which is up from 66 the previous year, so. This is just a step up proficiency, again, uh, this is preliminary data at this point in time, uh, we'll know more once they finalize them. But as we know, there's, uh, there's ups and downs, and you're going upstairs like that, uh, sometimes you'll have a little bit of a drop in some areas and growth in others, so we really do spend time to examine that. And as I pointed out previously, the state only evaluates you on, um, fourth grade compared to fourth grade. We look at that as one thing, but we also really want to look at cohort growth, and though the state doesn't look at that as an indicator, we do as a district, because I think that's a good indicator of our success, moving students forward, uh, continuously. And I'm gonna do the HR, because it's really cool, you're gonna hit, go ahead. So as you see, HR was very, very busy over the summer, as they typically are, a lot of new faces, uh, we like to do the video, and I appreciate Lisa doing that, it does give us a face for things, so when you're out, you know that they're new. But, uh, every year we get to make the video, that's what Lisa's been doing the last, I think, now, it's third year. And, uh, we get to see, sometimes it grows and gets longer, and this year it's, it's, uh, it's pretty long, once again, so. As you're on about, uh, please make sure that you welcome our new folks and, and all their shiny faces, which is nice to see as well. This is, uh, kind of an update on technology, and we were at, at this point in time, um, one of the things that Mike Morrison, the tech department does is a survey, a Breitbart survey every year. This is the first year that as a district, especially, we are, uh, advanced as a school district in our usage of technology, and there's a lot of metrics, metrics that go into that. And Mike, um, has told me that that's something that, um, very, very few districts have this distinction, and we are, uh, one of the few, and I really appreciate all the work that Mike does, uh, to make sure that our students and staff have the technology they need to be successful. And, uh, and now, again, you see a little bit of a comparison of when, uh, I know the project was size, but, uh, this was a, uh, a data point that Mike shared that I just felt needed to be reshared. And this is a data point from many years ago, when, um, before, uh, we really started on this journey, and as students are asked to collaborate online with classmates. And the solid bars, um, are, uh, as you, for meeting, on this point, but at least weekly, uh, is that blue. And you can see how high that new amount is and, uh, compared to previous, uh, measurements. Mike would like to know that the 2% are that say never collaborate with their classmates, but, uh, and I'm sure he'll find them, she usually does this. Again, this, it takes a lot of work to change your instructional, uh, strategies in your classroom, uh, to find ways for your students to collaborate online and make it meaningful. And as you can see, our, our students are continuing to do that, and every year that we do it, uh, it improves and, and the, um, that collaboration will be, become even more meaningful in the out years. And with that, I think this is a great example of that, uh, collaboration with our students and, and just meaningful work that we do. This is one of the rocket ready projects, uh, that I would like to highlight that, uh, Mike was a part of.
This is Gabby, a female Tidewater Gobi who lived in the Aliso Creek estuary. But Gabby and her family couldn't always live here. Long ago, Gabby's ancestors were sick. And were washed out to sea. When up above, urban development caused by humans poisoned the estuary by channeling and filling in waterways. The Aliso Creek became filled with fertilizers, pollution, pesticides, and poop. In total, humans noticed that invaders entered the estuary, and there was contaminants gaining the ocean from runoff. The humans realized that a healthy watershed means a cleaner ocean and proposed the Aliso Creek Restoration Project. Thanks to this project, humans recycled the runoff before it entered the creek. Increased wetland areas and native plants were introduced. Now the estuary is healthy and naturally mandarin creek tidal mudflats and shallow habitats for the free to raise. In Gobi's, western pond turtles, native fish, and un-native birds have a wonderful home. We love our estuaries because they provide water filtration for the ocean and they stabilize shorelines from surging seas. So remember to always protect our estuaries.
So as you can see, the, the credits there, uh, this was an animation project that really was focused, uh, on work that was being conducted, uh, by that group. And, uh, Bridgette was able to work with them and create, uh, something that she had really never done, a whole lot of which was animation at the time. And while they're doing this, they're also learning about the science of the local science region, which I think is a, is a great opportunity for our students to get out and see, um, what that estuary, um, looks like, what it used to look like, and how we've impacted that. That's what Rocket Radio allows, uh, allows for, really, in my opinion, student and teacher collaboration around projects. The videos, uh, that, uh, there's several more that, um, I encourage, once we, we're going through the process of making sure that everybody that's in the video, uh, can be publicly shown. But once we are able to verify that, uh, we'll put them up for review in, uh, powerful, powerful stories. And, uh, we showed a different, uh, video at the PTA, uh, back-to-school report, um, that, uh, I probably would cry if I watched it today, it's one of the reasons I didn't include it. It was just a really powerful video on a kindergarten, um, classroom, yeah, just making a difference, uh, our kids, um, and our teachers and our classified employees, uh, all kind of taking part in different parts. So, uh, with that, happy to, uh, answer any questions about the opening of school, I just wanted to give just a generic overview and highlight some of the work that we've been doing and are planning to continue to do in the future.
Is there any public comment on this, um, start of the school year report?
I guess I'm not sure of Mike, because I know he's looking for that one student.
Yeah.
That. I said I made a comment, but, you know, I probably got distracted and just didn't answer the question.
True, very true, so. I appreciate all the staff, all the work in this, so.
Animation that we've shown at that, I'd, it's like, and there were a lot of folks that were listening to the students explain how complicated it is through the animation. And they were very interested in all the steps and all the processes, and you see the end result, and then see what they had to look to get there, it's just.
It was a long process.
Long process.
Mr. Hills, would you come forward to speak on public comment on this item?
Yes, sir.
On the school of year report?
Um, first of all, I wanted to say that, um, you know, when you're a critic of the school board, one of the problems that comes with that is that you don't get to talk about the things that you're happy about and positive about when it comes to what's going on in the schools. And, uh, I was back in, um, Charlotte, North Carolina, visiting a elementary school. And, uh, um, they asked me to, to tell them about. And they asked me to tell them about the Gwinne Beach schools. And I did, told them about all the wonderful things that go on in our schools. And I actually talked to students and parents, if not every day, every week, about all the good things that are going on in our schools. But I think it's interesting. Board member Norman was talking about how if you're on the board, you like trust the educators. And it's, and so when there's a difficult vote, there's people from the public have different views. You know, in the end, you gotta listen to everybody and then you gotta trust the educators, you know, that's fine. And, you know, but I think that that's exactly the same speech that Bill Lancel gave when the same committee process produced the curriculum, path, math pathways curriculum issue that was hotly debated. And Bill Lancel said, "Well, if I got the community saying that it's on this side and I've got the people that we hired who are experts on this side, I'm gonna go with the experts." And you see, that's fundamentally flawed and it's a misconception about what a school board is. The educators are doing their job. They're educators, they're academic leaders. They are not here for governance. The board is here for governance. And governance is too important to be left to the educator educators. And education is too important to be left to the board. The board does not educate. The board does not, you are not educators, you're not here in your capacity as educators. You may be educators, but you're not here in that capacity. You're here to govern and represent the community. So when you, when you get into a situation where you're saying, "Well, who do I represent?" The educational bureaucracy and the public employees that I supervise, or do I represent the community?
You're near the end of your time and I wondered if you had a comment on this report?
Well, I'm talking about-
As you said, you didn't have a chance to comment on the actual items. So before your time's up, I wanted to make sure that you-
Well, I appreciate that clarification for everybody. So when I think of the beginning of the school year, this is what I am thinking about and this is my three minutes. The top item here is the beginning of the school year.
Correct.
And for me, as a citizen and taxpayer here in this town, when I think of the subject of the beginning of the school year, I'm talking about what I think about. And I started out by talking about that, you know, there's a lot of positive things that are going on in schools, but-
You need to finish up.
What's that?
You need to finish up with thirty more seconds.
Okay, well, suffice to say, I also wanted to say that I was really happy to see that the school board had made a decision to send the superintendent to a California School Board Association Superintendent's seminar or something. I read about that, was I correct in reading about that?
It's not a-
Well, anyway, the point is, that sounded really good. I would renew my suggestion that at some point to invest in the superintendent because he is such a good superintendent that he should be sent to the Kennedy School of Government, Senior Management of Government course. Something would be good to get him out of, out of the county, out of the state. Instead of going to Washington DC, go to Boston and spend some time with other educators up there in the senior management program. I think it'd be really good for the school district, good investment in our human resources and the performance of the superintendent.
Any other comments on this report?
I just wanted to comment in reference to Mike, that at the back to school nights, there was so much being used by instructors in the classes. And the classes that I peeked in on, I mean, the parents were just listening so attentively because it really helps those teachers get their points across. And, you know, the parents are also using their technology because they're taking pictures of things that they want to save. So it's really happening and I, you know, you're a part of your department, they're out there making sure that everything's functioning. So that's, they're really giving that kind of score. But thank you for this report.
You're welcome.
Our next information item is our financial update, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Fickers. About lots of reports, August, it's mostly staff that are not here. Some components you'll notice in this report is that the adopted budget figures are included in here, very low revenues, not very many expenditures made, so you're seeing some numbers there, which has to be expected for August. All the beginning fund balances are reflected in all funds. Another thing that I'd like to point out is in the OPEB trust report, you see the earnings for all of last fiscal year, which is about $330,000 in investments, so the housing report, so. If you have any questions, go on.
Is there any public input on this information? Any questions?
Clear. Very clear. Appreciate all of the detail information, always. And I think just in referencing this and the down meeting that we attended, they're really appreciative of the thoroughness of our financial reporting because they really understand how they can enhance. And we still can use that, but I mean, if they like to know that we're presenting that information of really what food shape we're in and they're appreciative of our strong position.
All the work that's been made here and here.
Thank you. Action items, move eleven, twelve. Approval of resolution eighteen dash ten, support for national bullying prevention month, Dr. Loria.
We did this last year and I think, again, it's a nice opportunity. I know our, all of our staff works on creating an environment that is safe for all students. And again, a lot of the data that we have supports, the work that we're doing has made an impact over the last several years. We have our school climate results we've looked at, we've clarified some questions. And it's allowed us to take a little proactive approach. I appreciate the board taking opportunities, proposing a resolution that we can then share out with our community that this is something we take very seriously. As a school district, I don't work very hard and diligently inside and outside of our classrooms to create a safe, positive learning environment.
Public comment? Oh, you can pass it over, thank you.
Hi, Sheri Morgan, don't you just sprinkle all over the place? I'd love that you are looking at adopting the initiative on bullying for the district. And I would love to ask that you consider looking very broadly at this across the school district and including perhaps some kind of a program where you're asking the kids, do they really understand what bullying means? You would think that the same age that they would have a really good idea of what bullying is all about, but I guarantee you, based on our personal experiences, that they really don't. They really don't understand sometimes that, you know, jokes through text that get out of control very quickly are actually a milder form of bullying that once it gets out of control is actually bullying. So when you look at this initiative and you start continuing to unfurl more and more programs within the district, I would highly encourage you to maybe take a step back and say, "This is great. We're spending a lot of money on bullying programs. Are we sure that they really understand what it is we're teaching them? And that they understand the differences and the nuances of what's bullying and what isn't?" Because they don't. What they think is funny is actually bullying. And it does hurt kids' feelings. And so I think that that's another level that we probably need to look at because it's surprising what is not understood.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, my name's Howard Wilson and I would like to say that I think that the best way to educate kids about bullying, in addition to all the other things that can be done, is for the board to set a good example. And, for example, and for the adults, for example, I think that the video that was made by the school district and school power about the math pathways portraying parents hiring a hitman to murder the superintendent and other somewhat blurred elements that were considered to be satire. I think that that video was a case of bullying by the school district and by the adults that were involved, including the personnel in the school district that were involved in it. I, I think that right here tonight, we had an interesting situation develop. Interesting double standard in play here. Board member Wolf talked about the fact that she wanted to be able to state her opinion and not be treated like an enemy. And then when I got up, I said, "Oh, I certainly agree with Board Member Wolf about that. She should be able to have her own opinion." And so then I got up and gave my opinion. And it's not just a case of bullying, but what you did, Board Member Brown, was you really attacked my right of freedom of speech. And I wasn't allowed to respond. And I think that that's an interesting double standard. That one board member says, "I want to be able to express my opinion and not be treated like an enemy." And then I get up and another board member, "Because I expressed my opinion, treats me like an enemy." You know, in your interview in the, in the school news, you said that you originally ran out of anger because you didn't like the way they treated Nancy Blake. I thought, I was surprised when I read that because I thought that what'd make you angry when you ran, when you were president of the PTA at Gwinne Beach High School, was when they, you said you were blindsided to find out that they were doing the MTV project. You were quoted in the paper saying you were blindsided by that. And I regret to see that you, you know, you began your career on the board here, which I think you've done a lot of wonderful stuff and I admire you in many ways. But I hate, I regret to see that you're feeling angry as you're preparing to leave the board. And I regret that. I think that your comments to me tonight were completely uncalled for.
Can I insert again, Howard, do you have a specific comment on this resolution?
Yeah, this is about bullying. This is about bullying.
I understand that you specifically commented on Mrs. Brown, not the resolution.
Well, I'm saying that the adults have to set a good example if we want to promote anti-bullying. So can I be restored to some time so I can finish my comment?
I stopped it.
Thank you very much. And I finally like to say, you, Madam President, you tonight did something that, Steve Keller tried to do it, Keta Brown tried to do it, and then tonight you tried to do it. You tried to do, revise history and say that the board never approved the MTV program. If you go back to, I think it was January twenty seventh, two thousand and three, the board meeting, they approved unanimously a resolution authorizing the superintendent to sign the contract, which had been negotiated for four months in secret. And then on, I think it was March fourth, two thousand and three, the board reconvened and rescinded their approval of an authorization of the superintendent to sign the MTV contract. So in fact, you did authorize that. And the only reason I'm bringing that up is because you brought it up. And again, when you, you know, said I was disingenuous, that is a form of bullying and I think it's such a bad example for the community and for the children.
Any other public comment? Any more questions? And we have a roll call vote.
Oh, Piper, your motion first, sorry. Someone's second.
Well, do you have any comments? Now we have a roll call vote.
I do know who would like to comment on this item. That we received it all, we received that from the Newport Foundation about that. Well, that's a city group for the city of Newport and for all of their schools. I'm not sure why they sent it to us as far as our schools. And I'm just, we have done so much in this area for so many years and reiterated again this year at back to school nights on what we're doing, on how we treat others, respect for others, relationships, kindness. And that's the theme at Thurston this year. So I just, it seemed odd to me that we would give that invitation. So I just wanted to clarify that because I didn't know whether it was a school foundation, it's a city foundation. And they deal with all kinds of things in the city of Newport H.
But do you think we should go and help them?
No. Because we have, because we have so much to do here. Anybody's free to go and listen if they want to, but I don't know that we would go as a board member in the sense of that. Well, I just wanted to add that I did, I did check into it because I didn't know what it was about. It's a district, it's not a district.
Right.
It's a city.
When I was at the back to school night, as well as walking nurse, Dr. Loria, there was a lot of defining, I kept mentioning at the beginning of the year, but a lot of defining bullying, defining zest, defining mindset. It was just like really definitions, yeah, like an zest in there, defining, really defining what the words are. And I thought, well, it's brilliant, right, to begin the year with some of these things that's in order for us to determine where we are on this. Yeah, let's see everybody have a definition of what that is, right, and conversation around it, not just a definition. And a zest, one of the zest of conversation.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Armenden?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Action item thirteen, approval of resolution eighteen dash eleven. Opposition to proposition five, property tax transfer initiative, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Fickers. Coming up on the developer ballot is proposition five, which per the legislative analyst office, which is an bipartisan group in the U.S. Sacramento, they're estimating that could reduce amount of property tax received by the state by one hundred fifty million in the near term and that's a billion in the long term. As community funded district, we rely heavily on local property taxes. So in addition to not, the high possibility of it passing, or the possibility of passing, and highly likely to receive less property taxes, it also makes it very difficult to budget because it's based on home sales and the overall environment. So school services of California provided a community funded district's attempt at resolution, which we have attached to the package for tonight, or recommend to the board to pass this resolution. In opposition to proposition five.
Public comment? More questions?
I just have one that, do they have done any polling to see what this is, what this looks like as far as passing?
Not to my knowledge, but I think there's, because the voting base that it attracts, it's more likely than not-
At a midterm, older, skewing older.
Yes.
Yeah.
Saving the money, terrifying.
Yeah, as it currently stands, CSBA has come out opposed to it and CTA. What we haven't been able to really understand is to what extent, because there has been no active polling on it yet, just yet, that we've been able to identify. While at the same time, the group that sponsored it is also sponsoring some legislation for 2020 ballot that, because they're seeing and hearing pushback from two very large groups that, which are both affiliated with schools and they don't want a detrimental effect for them as realtors, because that's the group that is currently, has sponsored the proposition, that would change potentially some of the loopholes in current property tax that would then maybe make this more palpable to voters. So they're hedging their bet, I would say, and expect that if it does fail, that they will be back on the ballot at 2020 with a different proposition that would address maybe some of the issues that they have now seen from CSBA and CTA as really strong positions. So more to come.
So this is being under, this is being supported or put forward by-
Californians.
By California realtors?
California Association of Realtors.
Do they know if we have crappy schools that it's going to, we're going to sell houses?
I think that's probably why they're hedging their bets in 2020 and that probably would be good to change their, their viewpoint.
Thank you. Motion?
Someone?
Second? Any discussion?
Yeah, you did.
No, it's taking really long tonight. Okay, Member Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Armenden?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Fickers?
Yes.
Action item fourteen, approval of social skills facilitation project with the Boys and Girls School of Gwinne Beach in the amount of $34,020.
Thank you, President Fickers. This is a continuation of program we've had since 2013. There's a slight increase this year because the hourly rate increased from $20 to $21, so it helped with that gap. But we're so appreciative of this, that my structure groups have boys and girls throughout this summer.
Public comment on this item? More questions? Motion please, someone?
Second?
Thank you, is it me?
It was Keta.
Any discussion?
I love this one.
It's a great program.
It's such a great program. I'm so, yeah, it's-
Great.
Another staff that I see down at Boys and Girls, but they're really appreciative to have more interaction with our students starting years ago with the homework, you know, collaborations so that they could actually, when the kids said they don't have any homework, they would write differently. And it helps the working parents because they can have to do all that homework before they got home at night. But it's, they, the staff, they really, really appreciates working with their kids at the site.
And it helps give them more hours and so they're able to get-
Right.
Better sound. All this, favor?
I.
Oppose?
Carrie's side.
Oh, Piper, sorry, I'm not used to it yet. Sorry. Action item fifteen, approval of the personnel reimbursement agreement between the Capital State Unified School District and the Laguna Beach Unified School District. Dr. Devoe.
Thank you, President Dickerson. This is a personnel reimbursement agreement between Capital Unified and our district. This was serviced to students for five days.
Public comment? Questions for the board? Motion please. Room, second? Any discussion?
Just one, I noticed it says in here, just one thing you really thought, but it's, there's one here. It's not a personnel reimbursement service.
Right.
Just, it's more student, it's something that we don't provide, and they can provide for us.
Alan. Piper?
Yes.
All in favor?
I.
Oppose?
Carrie's side votes.
Action item sixteen, approval of independent contract agreement with sports performance exercise and readiness LLC, Sphere, in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand. Mr. Dixon.
So we're recommending the contract with sports performance exercise and readiness, to work with our students at the high school to, you know, injury prevention, strength training, improving flexibility, and improving quickness for the year. Funding for this will come from the Hexford Annual Donation through School Power, and then fully covers all costs associated with this contract and due to the year of two thousand nineteen.
Public comment?
More questions? Is this, is this going to be just, because I'm with that approved equipment explosive, absolutely. So is this, is this for, is this like the PE, or is this going to be directed toward the, the, our, our sports programs, or? Oh, hey, hi, you're still.
I'll answer it, I got it. You can go ahead.
See that, see that, quite that explosive.
Yeah.
So it's specifically to meet the need of our seventh period athletics, because there's so many teams, and, uh, the Hexford Foundation wanted to serve coaches. And we talked about a basketball coach specializes in basketball, not in weight training, and so.
Okay.
So all of our teams have access to it.
Perfect, thank you.
And then, this is ongoing, this is just this year, and they don't.
Yes.
Okay, they don't really have funding in Hexford. Just on my shirt.
Thank you.
Any questions? Motion please, someone, second? Any discussions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I really hope injury prevention, because that's really key. Everybody can't have expertise in all areas.
Piper?
Yes.
All in favor?
I.
Oppose?
There's five votes.
Action item seventeen, approval of board policies, second read and final approval. Dr. Gloria.
So, uh, again, appreciate the board on, uh, August fifteenth, uh, we had a workshop to review and discuss policies, bylaws. They were brought forward on September eleventh for first read, uh, and the board consented to reset with no revisions, which is why they're being presented by our approval. And that's it, I'm not going to go through each one. Oh, sorry, there is, there is one edit that we've made, uh, fifty-one forty-four dot one, uh, that we'd like to call out, and, um, trying to provide some clarity.
Which one was that, page one thirty-two?
One thirty-two.
Okay. So suspension and expulsion due process, or the doctor?
You'll see, um.
Just the red and the red.
The red, in accordance with, uh, AR fifty-one forty-four, trying to create, uh, a better, uh, why a student could potentially be, we feel it may important to have, uh, a regulation that, uh, would provide some definition. Obviously, a, a teacher still has the authority by which to suspend a student in class. This is related to, um, a disciplinary correction outside of the classroom.
Public comment on the second read of these policies? More questions? I, I don't feel comfortable with the board bylaw on that. Without having more information. And then it was, it was passed to second read by the board of the last meeting, so what's, what is the board about? Well, I had asked Dr. Gloria, and he said that he would get information from other districts about how they, uh, chose their student reps, et cetera. And I just wanted more detailed information about which districts and how they did. We received that information.
Yeah, I presented the last board meeting, I didn't provide the specific districts that we polled their board policies, uh, our board bylaws. However, uh, in review, both Victoria and I reviewed, uh, those that reviewed, the majority of them utilize, uh, a board, um, agreed upon board policy of practice. And, uh, that is the process that's utilized. So again, it doesn't preclude the board, the board will still bring, uh, we would bring back to the school board a process, that could include whatever factors the board wishes to include in a process. So it simply is a board-approved process. And that could be, if the decision of the board is to have it to be a popularly elected position, that would be, uh, the process that, if the board approved that, would be utilized. If it was a process was a multi-prom process, the board again is going to approve that process, and we will include it as an addendum to this. It just simply, um, provides clarity that this is a board-approved process, because the bylaws of red was somewhat contradictory in nature, because it was approved by the board, a process approved by the board, but that, but, well, at the same time, a process that is, uh, students elected, so it needs, there needs to be a clear process. So you could say, we want to just do interviews, and then it would say on the other side, but then elected by students. So we need to have some semblance, and so the discussion at that meeting, the last meeting was that we will convene a group, we have already started, and we'll continue that work with both, um, Ms. Warner and, uh, students from the associate student body to discuss a potential process that we could bring forward to the board for approval at a future date and a future meeting. So the board bylaws does not preclude that process has been, uh, brought, and it will be, have to be brought back to the board for approval, because we currently do not have a process.
Well, I, I did some research, um, because I didn't know which districts you had spoken with. So I spoke with, um, testing, and in their process, the school board makes the choices. In fact, they adamantly believe that principals and administrators shouldn't be involved. The high school sends four candidates, and then the board of education decides.
But would that be voting on what the process, would we be voting on that a process to come back?
But we, well, the part I didn't like is we took out the student choice part, which I think is very important.
Would that be part of the process?
Since you weren't, since four of us moved this forward for first read, I think the point of order would be that you can take this one off and vote against it.
Okay.
As a approval, because we did, you know, it's not going to change. I mean, four of us approved moving this forward to the second read, and I don't think there's, that proposition's changed.
Okay.
So that, is that an acceptable solution?
Well, I think that's what you would have to.
I mean, I don't know any other way, because I don't think that you'd have support to not move this on second read.
Not move it forward. Okay, I brought a, I brought a lot of other information about what other places are doing, and hand me this.
And I, I don't.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable.
Well, but I think the, the clarity is, the process is yet to be identified, so the information that you just shared is process. So, um, that is to be determined by the board at a future date. The bylaw simply says that a process will be what is utilized, uh, so.
But we changed the bylaw.
The process could use a, uh, could say, we would like it elected by the student body. If your process was different than that, the bylaw is contradictory, and it would, it require that you still have a student selection, and your policy, your bylaw would read something different, and your policy, your process would be different. And they are contradictory, because they don't, it, so that's, the clarity is the board-approved process, and that's what we were looking at with bylaw. We did not, we did not go in and ask about what people's processes were, because that's not the bylaw that's being presented tonight. And being presented is simply.
But, but didn't we use a process that what, didn't follow our bylaw?
There is, there is no current process, that's why we're bringing this.
But what we just used, we used something.
We used a process, there was no process prior.
But we didn't follow what the, what the.
There is no board-approved process.
Board bylaw.
There's no board-approved process, as it currently stands.
Our bylaws in contradiction to itself, because it's like, they'll vote and we'll have a process. But I never defined what our process was, so the important piece is not to define in this tonight, right? What we're going to do, but that we will have a process, and then the process will come back after conversations are had. At school's, about what it is that they would like to do as process, and then we will have a voice in that to create.
But, but why are they deciding what the process should be?
Because they're students, it's like.
They're going to hear those students.
The student, the student senate will be.
The students, the students will have a voice.
Will be creating, will, will be recommending what they feel the best process is, but then.
The student senate will be recommending what the best process is to us.
Okay. Right, so if you think about, like, we were voted, and then we went through other application pools, and we interviewed someone, and we hired someone, right? So it amounts to, yeah, in that, so they're going to go through and create what their process looks like. We would then approve it or not, or should we dare change it, or as we do on recommendations, as we did clearly tonight. So they could be recommended, it doesn't mean that's what we're going to do, right?
But if your concern is student voice.
My, my concern is student voice, and I know that was kind of in there before.
This, this works out, this works out somewhere at this year's D.
Right, because the idea was to have a more significant student presence.
Right, right, and I want so.
Yeah.
We do, we've got Piper, and I'm opposing, so.
And Caitlin.
And Caitlin.
Right.
But I just, I.
So it will be, they will be discussing it.
I am worried if they are discussing it and they're bringing something forward.
Because one thing came back that said, um, Miss Honeycutt will appoint all students, right, interested persons.
Yeah.
Right, well, then our board policy would no longer be compliant, because no, we said students were voting, right? And so if we leave it as a, a closer to a blind slate and allow the process to happen, also allows the process to change over time based on the senate and not us dictating it, so.
Right, I just feel like her saving anything she'd like to say.
Oh, okay. So, like, or something.
So, I feel like at the last meeting, I kind of said, like, how the process was in the past, where I was just basically appointed, and then how it was last year where everyone was given the opportunity to fill out an application for the ones that were interested. They did, we had two interviews, wrote a personal statement, um, and then the board decided who the student representatives would be. And in the future, I do think students should be on the panel in the interviews. But if it were a position such as, like, A's be present, it wouldn't be as successful, just because that would be more of like a popularity contest. So that's just.
Totally with agreement if students are part of it. I like that we have the student part in it before, but is that now, but I'm, but I'm, I understand if we.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to define what that, correct. And then define it on a regular basis, so it's not stagnant.
Okay.
Which that's why I think it's easier to follow the compliance, right? When they're stagnant, and we've narrowed it versus allowing them to create it.
No, I love allowing them to create it.
Yes, so that's what, so that's what we're voting on tonight.
So this framework.
By which.
Okay, we're getting, we're, this is too much discussion.
Okay. Okay, sorry, my question, so.
Sorry.
Are we in a motion?
Oh, so.
Someone?
Oh, oh, wait, no, do we need to take out that one, Dee?
Do you want to take out that?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. So.
Carol? Now we can have more discussion if you.
Sorry. But yeah, so then, but then it does provide that, so that as, as they, as they, or trains, as they move through, they're allowed to define that more, they're allowed.
That's exactly what I think should happen. But I also think that we should look at the processes that other districts.
Well, but if you want to make that request, because I made a note for that, that comes under our next items, we cross over that protocol issue, then, then we don't do our own research, that we ask, and so.
Well, but I never agreed with that.
Well, but it's, the majority rules, and so we did set that up as a protocol, and so you need to surface it and see if, if there's a majority of the board that says they would like staff to spend time researching.
No, we never, we, we agreed that we would have staff agree if everything.
Right.
Agreed, if staff should bring, do research, but we didn't agree that we could not do our own research.
Yes, we did, we did the protocol.
We did.
We did.
We did.
We discussed that in order to have information across all five of us, because we're a majority rules board, the information would be led by the staff or shared amongst all five of us.
But, yeah, I mean, I would, I would share it.
We'll bring it there.
I would share it.
Oh, yes.
Start that one.
No, we said that, she was told by superintendent Smith, so.
And that will bring it back into the next item.
Okay. Okay.
So no more discussion.
Piper?
Yes.
All in favor?
I.
Oppose?
Carrie's side votes.
Okay, item eighteen, whatever requests for items for the next meeting, requests for information or general comments?
Maybe, nothing.
Carol?
That was so fascinating. Um, first, um, which, I'm here. Um, with Ms. Novick, I, I think it's very important to allow people to serve those holy holidays, no matter what they are, and give them the space. I know we have a board policy in it, I think, I don't know what the ARs are on it, but I would think that we would want in the ARs that we're not testing, and we're not doing things on those days, to the best of our ability, especially athletic things, some of the you can't control. But that we're, but there are things we can, that we control it, um, around those certificate dates. And then, um, and then I did attend all three back to school nights, and, um, it was a community celebration. I don't know if it's because I just have one left in the high school, or my kid was going off to college, or whatever it was, but it really, it was, it really was, it was a community celebration, and it was, it was wonderful to have parents, even if they disagreed with something, they weren't, yeah, they were just like, a couple of dudes asked, like, was your mind made up when you started? I was like, I know, we're not, you know, when we started, that's why we have the study sessions, right? So it was nice to have a space to do that, and even more lovely was to hear the teachers, really elaborate about the goals and align the parents on the goals. Whether, I don't know if, maybe because my kid further along and I'm not listening, because I need to do stuff, but I could just see the alignment's easier, I'm not sure, but I think conversations have changed. And your teachers are all impressive, you can't even see yours, and, um, and they were engaged, and the parents were engaged, and so I think you guys, we're back to school night. And then, uh, Dr. Devoe, you moved so many parents with your comment, especially those that are dyslexic themselves, or have, like, I do, or dyslexic children, as I have. Because they, they tend to go with each other, you know? But you, uh, when you said challenge us to, um, every student every day, right? And you explained, and you said that, um, we're no longer going to wait and see what develops, but we know that if we identify, it's just like the children, they're young, they can actually read nothing. It really moved and had such a positive conversation, even tearful, like, on the sidewalks of, not that they want their kids to be young again and start over, but just, most of them have older children, right? And they just, it healed, it was healing, so thank you for the healing comments. And, um, and Mr. Dixon, we all need a cheerleader, so thank you for cheerleading while they're so busy doing what they're doing, and coming along, cheerleading them, and writing the majority that grad, and celebrating, um, that's wonderful. Thank you for very, and I have a lot.
I agree with Carol, I would like to have, um, some consideration taken for the high holidays. I think that's important, the high holidays, yeah, I just think that's, I'm good, I'm very accountable. I, because I just think that's important. I would also like to thank Dee for coming to the Laguna Beach High School Scholarship Foundation America's event. It was, I know.
Was that the school, not, I was about to say.
And Dee likes. And Jason came for a bit, which was awesome, it was nice to have him, but.
Jason came for a bit.
Oh, yeah, Jason came, yes.
Jason is plural, came for a bit.
So, it's weird, but I, but anyway, I, as, as a board member, I, uh, LEHSSF board member, I just appreciate that you all are willing to come, and, and the folks that we honor are, it just, it's just, it's a, it's a great group, give a lot of fun away, and are happy with it, but thank you for supporting us, appreciate that.
I love going. I love, um, meeting people that I've heard, seen their names before, like Jan, saw her name for a long time, but I had never met her. And I'm so impressed, your first Jen Fritson, and a lot of what she has done, and meeting the very first president, um, yeah.
There was a lot of. Jane, what was it, Rocco, I can see her.
Arroy, yeah.
Oh, Rocco?
Haroko.
And Jane, yeah, Bavarian, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a lot of great people, they would have enjoyed seeing Jen.
Next.
I have a request for the, looking at, uh, one of the things that we got from CSBA, that that type of mine, and we're doing a good job with our hurls, but it also said that we should explore how many of our, let's see, what did they call them, our socially financially disadvantaged students and our ethnic students? How, if they are given equal opportunities and spots at the high school, what percentage of them are third-year students? I have a request that the staff.
So it's not very many people, but look at, so you look at their, their. That they're represented. That they're represented.
I I want a percentage so we can see if we should be giving more assistance to those students. So they can be, yeah, so that they can be on high school athletic team.
Just solely athletic.
We can't place, we can't place them on teams.
It's a, no, I'm not saying place them on teams, I'm saying if they're not, is it because of financial difficulties? Is it because of, you know, transportation? Is it because they don't care?
But how can I find out, so why not? Is my question is, it's like you get the data, you can't.
We can't single them out.
You can't single them out and then ask them, why aren't you in soccer? Or I.
So so why do you think that was one of the big requests of boards to do?
Well, the board isn't to, I read that saying, CSBA probably.
To be able to ask.
Boards, the board should not do it.
Not to do it, but to ask, so you can see if there's an issue.
And ask the question. Right.
Not that we're gonna fix it.
So I guess that if you ask.
But we ask, we'd be aware if there's an issue.
So here's my, so here's my thought around that, because I read it too and I, I mean, I read through those and oh, that'd be fun to ask. Or ooh, I might already know answer that and I move back in that page or something. Or just I just slide if it's not. It goes back to like these two people here with the significance, or the strength and significance are always focused on what's significant. And I, and I, when I read some of those things, that might be the significant thing in their district. And so ours is, is that what's significant in our district? What do we?
I don't want.
Right, and so the question I need is more like, is that significant? If it is, can we get information? And if it's not, then we move on and let, and and maybe what is significant is really a better question. What's in those significant things we should work on now is more important than, especially some of those with, some of those that are made for those present big districts are made for more diversity in their population? Like some of them I see as they're really about certain people.
What, in this situation, what is she asking as far as it's in your student privacy?
I don't ask anything to make, to see, not means.
No, I don't, I know what you're asking, but I'm saying. Just to present.
But what are we doing with privacy issues?
Can we even pull those numbers out?
Well, we we could only do it, we wouldn't do it through priorities much because that's not something that's coded that way. It would be socioeconomically disadvantaged potentially. The the question, under Title IX, there's very specific rules because it's it's sports, solely sports. So it doesn't factor in any other extracurricular activities, so I don't know if OCR is even currently even evaluating each year. Though California may have added it as a sport nationally, I don't believe they have at this point in time. I don't know if it's on an indicator, we have added that to my knowledge. What's also not in there from an OCR standpoint is going to be non-sanctioned sports. Students that are in dance are not part of OCR as well. So I just need to, I think, to have a better clearer idea of what exactly, is it just the CIF sanctioned sports that we offer? It's about a hundred, you know, we have about a hundred and forty students plus or minus a few that are, fall into the socioeconomically disadvantaged category at the high school. So is it any extracurricular activity, obviously we won't know clubs. Is it anything, so M U N sports that are involved or is it just sports? And then you then I know what parameters are working from and then.
It's like, it means it can drop, there's so many options, so is it, but they're not in something?
Yeah, from some, yeah, this has happened before just to extend.
Well, this was a Title IX.
I'm gonna go the reverse way. If our sole goal is opportunity in this district, that we meet the needs of kids, I feel like that, we have that charge, we have that goal. Our leaders have that goal, opportunity, whatever it may be, Title IX sports, clubs, dance, whatever it may end up being. To me, the overarching goal is opportunity. And so I feel comfortable that opportunities being offered, new ideas all the time, passion projects, student senate, so mix in with sports. So to me, and we have Lance Neil who's always open to starting a new sport, getting people engaged, making sure boosters aren't over requesting donations. To me, it's opportunity is what you're asking. To me, we do it. To me, I don't need more data on it, the opportunity is out there. And we have D-LAC which helps those kids, those reach opportunities.
I'm pretty, I have a common thing.
I might add this.
Oh, oh, hold on.
No, no, not that, I expected another explanation, but I just want to make sure that you, you have.
I know there's a lot of opportunities on campus where students can find what they're interested in and do it.
And that that financial needs don't hold them back, that's really what we're asking.
No, I think the dilemma with that, Dee, comes to me, comes to mind to me is before the ACLU decision, but it was with science camp at Thurston a number of years ago. And there were scholarships available, but you then have that part that someone doesn't feel personally comfortable asking for that, right? And so they would rather wave their child out of going to science camp, that's a matter of pride, personal pride. And I don't, I'm really nervous about getting into that area. What I would hope for, and again, I'll use that T word now we're not supposed to use, trust. I would trust with both Jenny and the other Jason, well, Jason A. That they would know their student bodies well enough by using their counselors, by using their vice principals and even teacher input. We would send something over here, conversation. If they were aware of students that were, would really love to be in something and can't do it for whatever reason and then they would just pass out and they figure out a way to solve the problem, I would say the same thing for Lance Neil.
Yeah, that's for sure.
And he would see that and he would, you know, I mean, it's.
I was gonna say one thing, our liaison has done a great job with that, we get phone calls.
Is that Yadi or?
Yeah, that's, yes, it's not Yadi.
Not Yadi.
Ivan.
Ivan.
Ivan, okay, yes, she's liaison.
But, yeah, we don't want that, we don't want to end that, so I, so I just, I need to know if the board interests for me to, as a staff time, you know, I said it's about a hundred and forty plus students, but I need to know parameters or is it, is that not of interest of the board at this point in time? We obviously will have, I can share our Title IX numbers with you, we're currently in the process of updating those. That is just gonna be gender breakdown, I can do ethnic breakdown on math because that's easier to do. It's still only sports, it's not anything extracurricular, so I don't know.
Well, in in all the different surveys we do with the students, is there a question or is that placed somewhere in there where we ask them if they, if they, if they feel there's something keeping them from? I mean, I don't, I actually.
I'm just thinking that question now.
Right, okay, because I think if I asked a lot of the students, if you correctly pronounce, that there's way, there's so many opportunities for the majority of them, right? That it's selecting, like it's in the ways they don't have time to choose more than they don't have something. I think it's more like, I wish I had learned more about T D, I wish I had learned more about X, I would have done more of that, whatever it is. But I don't know if that is within the area that you're looking for, so I don't, I I don't think. I I want to know what others that may apply to Title IX, right? Just something we'll get updated with as soon as we get the information, but I'm not sure.
Started that, we updated that Title IX.
Okay, I just want to make sure that all the students, even if they have.
The consensus is they are. You guys.
Can you have another request, Dee, was that?
Um. I have another one too.
All right, well, this is where you can bring it up and see if there's consensus.
Okay, um, I, um, I have one to, well, no, I'll wait on this one because I'm waiting for an answer. Don't worry.
And was there consensus on the comment I made, because I have kind of said something, I need to really look for consensus, I was just thinking the comment in general.
Oh, I agree with it.
Oh, yes.
Be the high health. Yeah, yes, yes, yeah. Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Consensus, be be a good pressure chair.
Okay. I just want to make a comment on observing the D-LAC meeting and I just think what they put together, because they told me some of the things I missed before I got there because I was listening to Dr. Allman in his presentation and at, and we started back to school night. But that Mike had been in and was talking to, and Jeff Dipple had been and talked about the English classes for the adults. And then Ivan was talking, of course, I don't know what they're saying because I'm very, I'm, I didn't learn Spanish, I'm really disadvantaged. But they just provided about the slides, Alicia was there, tons of information, but really that Mike was there to talk about break slant, which I think is just so, so important. I know in other years he's taught them how to do the phone books, how to access areas, I mean, it's just, reaching out to that group is is a critical need at this meeting. And they were encouraging them to come in here, Jerry Wyman tomorrow night, because we have the translation devices and so it's, so. They're, Yadi and Ivan are both very, very eager and dedicated, you know, so it's a good thing to witness. And I really appreciate it, you having students speak regarding the changes in the student involvement, student senate. I think that was really good information to share with the parents and you did a good job. I want to thank all of, all of the, our leadership who presented at the coffee talk, right? It was so much information and a really good way to 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 present that, to share that with parents. And I just, I think that we need still to continue with a protocol discussion and I think that we need to have some discussion about boarder responsibility as far as accessing information if you need to miss a meeting. So that we have a really addressed that and so they're gonna do it.
We just got with the real way.
What?
I listened to the.
Actually not.
But anyway, we'll talk about it, I just say it with me.
Right, right.
Pass that in. Um, then there was one thing that I forgot to share out of the PTA council meeting, because Catherine Blackburn is just her, one of her big things and is that even though, I thought of it this week, but I noticed that the PTA newsletters are sharing it about the form, that they're more responsible in doing the voters, that they can do that, she was adamant at that meeting to the PTA presidents at the site, that there can be no campaigning on campuses. And I did not, I did not share that and I thought it was a misadventure because she's very, very clear about that. And I think that's all that I had. Oh, they loved the video that you had at back to school night and Andy out there himself with that one.
Yeah, great. Is that gonna be on the website somewhere?
It should be on the website.
Okay.
It's very good. So our next meeting is Tuesday, October ninth at six o'clock, public session here in the boardroom and a motion for.
Second.
Everybody.
Right.